All the July 30, 2012 San Carlos Planning Commission meeting to order. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Commissioner Silbermann?
Here.
Commissioner Corral?
Here.
Vice Chair Harper Pedersen?
Here.
Chair Marsters? Public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Is there anybody who would like to speak under public comment commenting on something not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any adjustments or changes to the July 16 minutes?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are going to move on to new business. Item A, update Holly Street, Highway 101 interchange improvements.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Al Savae, Community Development Director. And as everybody knows, Holly Street has had traffic congestion for some time, and the Holly Street interchange improvements would provide the necessary traffic congestion relief for the Holly Industrial Intersection and also serve anticipated growth in San Carlos. Improvements are also necessary as part of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation environmental mitigation. And in 2009, the City Council authorized an alternatives analysis, which was completed that same year. In 2010, the City Council adopted the top-tier alternatives which were recommended by the Transportation and Circulation Commission. And there was a wide-ranging community process, there was at least seven community meetings. And today, we're at a milestone point, as the next key step in the project is to prepare what's called a draft project study report for Caltrans. And Caltrans is in charge of the interchange. The city can't do anything to the interchange without getting Caltrans approval. So we're at this milestone point today. And options for getting bicycles and pedestrians across the interchange has been a big part of the discussion, as it's difficult, and as most people know, it's quite daunting to get across that interchange. So in addition to providing what they call a complete streets provision of access for bikes and pedestrians on the interchange itself, we've come up with two options for a separated pedestrian and bike crossing. So these other two options are being considered. And they're now referred to as options 1G and 1H, and I'll show you what they look like in just a second. However, in the planning preparations with the Caltrans organization, we had initially studied out to the year 2020. And when we got with Caltrans, they said, no, you have to study to the year 2035. And so, once we did that, we discovered that the initial alternative or cloverleaf design was not sufficient to carry the traffic in the year 2035. So we had to modify the alternatives to get across. And so this is option 1H. And before, in the initial alternative, we had this part of the cloverleaf intersection here and this part. So this now has to be eliminated because it would create a conflict with people going this direction in an easterly direction across. So this had to be eliminated. So it now becomes the full cloverleaf design. So we had to make changes there. One of the initial ideas, again, for getting the pedestrians and bikes across the interchange was to create a separate but connected, separate but connected bike and pedestrian path. And that would connect here at the intersection of Holly Street and Industrial. You could get on it here, or you could access it here on East San Carlos, and then it would connect you on this loop which is attached here around, and you could go either direction on this separated and protected bike pedestrian path. And so that was the initial concept, and everybody seemed to agree that that was the best one, because it protected people from getting across. The green street, or the complete streets alternative that Caltrans wants us to do is, what that means is you would provide bike and pedestrian access on the interchange. And we would do this in any of these scenarios. The issue there is, even if you provide pedestrian and bike access sidewalks and bike lanes across here, you're still crossing intersection here and a couple of other intersections here. So it's not an optimal situation, doesn't fully protect the pedestrian or the bicyclist. So in meetings with Caltrans, what they've said is that they have some concerns about this particular design because it's connected to their interchange, and they have issues with risk management, safety and such. And so they've been resistant to this idea, and they've indicated that if the city wishes to pursue alternative 1H, that it would take a long time, up to a year more, and there's no guarantee that the city would get approval. So at this stage, the city has to be willing to put a significant extra effort in working with Caltrans for this concept. The other concept that we intend to add and submit along with that project study report is option 1G. And what this does is it takes that connected bike path away from the interchange itself and separates it down here, and makes it, you go down East San Carlos, and you can go over the US 101 and connect down to Skyway, and you can go both directions. And that's fine. But the issue there is, we've seen from the city of Belmont, which recently constructed one of those, it took them about 10 years and $10 million to do. And so this wouldn't be, we believe that this would take much longer to do, and it would be much more costly to do. So based on this and consideration of these two options, the Transportation and Circulation Commission recommended to the City Council that the City Council authorize the city manager to write a letter to Caltrans and say that this option 1G with this connected and separated bike pedestrian path is the city's preferred alternative. We would submit both 1H and 1G, but this is our preferred alternative. And at the meetings about the letter, there was a good deal of support for item 1H, and we received written and verbal support for that. So last month, the City Council authorized the city manager to send that letter to Caltrans with the preferred alternative 1H. And this will give you a better idea of that connected path through here, so you could access it in either location. And this is the, the complete streets idea would be to also provide bike pedestrian access across the interchange. And that concludes the staff update on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume since it's a study session, is there anybody that would like to comment on it? I guess we're all here for one thing. Okay.
Okay.
Moving on, and before we get to the San Carlos Transit Village final environmental impact report, there are a few things that I need to say. First of all, as Planning Commissions, we're required to disclose ex parte communications with individuals or groups involved with a project we are reviewing. So, starting back 10 years ago, I served the city of San Carlos as a stakeholder on the West Side specific plan, goals and policies for the railroad corridor. I served for five or six years as president of the L'Oriola Association, the precursor to the Greater East San Carlos group. I served for five to six years on the city of San Carlos's Economic Development Advisory Commission, and obviously now I'm serving on the Planning Commission. I've had numerous conversations with the developer, legacy partners, SAM Trans, business owners throughout San Carlos, residents on both the east and west side of the proposed project for over the last 10 years. I've not prejudged the project and believe that I am able to make a thorough, impartial and fair assessment of the project. The second thing I want to talk about is that as part of this process, we need to respect each other, even if we do not agree on a given topic. As a San Carlos Commissioner, there have been times when my fellow commissioners and I have not always agreed after a full discussion of a topic. We still treat each other with respect and agree to disagree. I expect the same from those who are present tonight and throughout this process. Third, tonight, we will be having a study session on the San Carlos Transit Village environmental impact report. We're not having a public meeting, a public hearing. City staff and I felt this was a necessary step, as none of the current Planning Commissioners were Planning Commissioners when the project was first presented to the public. The public hearing for the project is currently scheduled for Monday, October 1st. As the Planning Commission has done in the past, there will be time for the public to comment as part of the study session. As this is a study session, we will not be responding to the public comments, so I encourage you to attend the public hearing. And now, Al, will you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's study session is to provide the Planning Commission and the public with an opportunity to review the final environmental impact report and get refamiliarized with the project, just as mentioned by the chair. And tonight is a chance to ask questions and to hear public comments on the FEIR. There won't be any formal decisions of the Planning Commission this evening. And again, this evening is for study and informational purposes only. When it gets to public comment, we'll keep tabs on all the questions and comments, and they'll be shown on the screen here, and we'll bring those back for the October 1st public hearing. The project is on a two-phase track, and Phase 1 is consideration of the environmental review or the final environmental impact report. Eventually, the City Council needs to certify the environmental impact report. And so Phase 1 is only about the environmental consideration of the project. Even if the EIR is certified as adequate, this doesn't mean that it's approval of the project. It only means that the EIR adequately addressed and reviewed the potential environmental impacts of the proposed project. In Phase 2, if the EIR is certified, the city would then consider what is, what I'll refer to as the merits of the project. And that means that all the permits and the design considerations would come forward at future public hearings. In terms of tonight's meeting schedule, this is an opportunity, again, I'm gonna, I guess we're gonna repeat ourselves a little bit here, is to familiarize the Planning Commission and the community about how the project has evolved and what the project entails. And we've organized this presentation to provide you with a more comprehensive overview of the project. And following my comments, we've asked SAM Trans to talk about how the project was initiated and some of the history, going back to the beginning, of why this project and how is it coming forward. And we've also asked the project architect to go over the design of the project and how the project has changed over time. And then we'll have the city's environmental consultant go through the final environmental impact report and talk a little bit about CEQA and about how it applies to this project and the EIR. And this will be followed by public comment and Commission questions. In terms of next steps, the next meeting, as mentioned by the chair, will be October 1st, and this is a public hearing. And at that time, it will be time for the Commission to consider whether or not to recommend that the City Council certify the environmental document, excuse me. We anticipate that the FEIR will then be heard by the City Council in the November-December timeframe. If the EIR is certified, a new public hearing process would begin, and that's that Phase 2 that I mentioned before. And this would be the permits and the design of the project in the Phase 2. And it's important to note, again, that if the EIR is certified, that doesn't mean that the city has approved the project. The permit approvals and architectural design comes in that Phase 2. So once the city does certify the EIR, the city will have approximately six months to either approve or deny the project by state law. And so now what I'd like to do is, if Mr. Fitzpatrick is here, I'll ask Brian Fitzpatrick from SAM Trans to provide an overview, followed by the project architect, Sherri Scott, and then we'll have Michael Kay, the city CEQA consultant. Brian? Let me get out of here for you.
Good evening, Chair Marsters, members of the Commission. Thank you very much for having me here today. As Mr. Marsters so eloquently referred to at the beginning of this session, this project's been going on for a long time. Also, as he referred to, there's been a lot of changes. I would, I would say that the whole City Council's changed since this thing was first a glimmer in anybody's eye, and as Mr. Marsters has referred to, the Planning Commission is new. So what I thought I would do, probably you can tell by the gray in my beard and my lack of hair, I've been on this project for a while, and I may be the one uniquely suited to tell you all a little bit about what's happened sort of since the beginning. And frankly, I think Mr. Marsters as well has been around for a while, but hopefully I'll be able to provide a perspective to everybody. You know, I think it's important to note as a start for this, that this project just didn't pop out of thin air. There's been a lot of planning, there's been a lot of groundwork, and frankly, there's been a lot of policy grounding and underpinning, a policy anchor, as some people would like to say, associated with this project. So I'm gonna try to help everybody see how that's evolved, see how we got from where we were in 1998 to where we are right now. And in practicing for this, or in looking into this, I kind of went back to figure out what would be a legit starting point. And in 1998, there was a railroad land use Citizens Advisory Committee that was put together. The appointments were made by the San Carlos City Council, and it was a 21-member committee. And I kind of went back and looked at the members of the committee, and it's quite an astonishingly broad and deep and talented group. You've got both current, at the time in 1998, City Council members, you've got future City Council members. You have current Planning Commission members, you have future Planning Commission members. There's actually a number of people that are citizens from both the east side and the west side, and there's also people from the business community. This is a very broad-based advisory committee that was put together in 1998. August 11, 2003, after quite a bit of work by this committee, there were two resolutions put together. And they were City Council resolutions 2003-78 and 2003-79. And what they were is, it was a result of four or five years of committee work that came out of this, this working process, went to the City Council and said, we're not ready to entitle or approve a project yet. But when somebody does come through with a project to be entitled, we want the project to have the following features. We're going to determine the following policies, the following goals, the following design features that we want to see in this project. And that resulted in resolutions 2003-78 and 79. They basically amended the West Side specific plan for the railroad corridor property, which is the property that we're now talking about, one. And then, two, set goals and policies for the development of the railroad property. So I'm not going to go through what's in that, but if anybody's interested, members of the audience, you know, Planning Commission, I'm sure it's in your packet, I would refer to that. To get an idea of the policy goals and what did the city want to see on this site? So after we received that from the city, we at SAM Trans have realized that in order to successfully develop land, SAM Trans is the owner of the railroad land. And maybe for those of you who aren't familiar with this land, I'll tell you that it goes from the Taco Bell on the north, all the way down to Arroyo on the south. The land's owned by SAM Trans and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board. SAM Trans is a lead agency for developing this land. So what do we do when we want to develop land? We're not developers. So what we do is, we enter into a public-private partnership. I think we've all heard a lot about it, but how do we do that? What we do is, we partner with a developer who is expert in developing land, which we're not, we're experts in running transit. So the first step in doing this, at least the way that we do it, is develop a very strong relationship with the city, which means the city's got goals and policies for development of that land. We want to make sure those goals and policies are the same as ours. We want to work hand in hand with them. Next step that we do is, we issued a request for statement of qualifications. For those of you who aren't sort of in the business that we do, one of the things that you gotta be very careful with as a public entity is, we don't want to just get in and look at pretty pictures and gigantic financial returns. The first thing that we want to do is, we want to develop the property in conjunction with somebody who's done it before. So what we're looking for is capacity. What do I mean by capacity? Two things. Financial capacity, somebody who's got the money to do what they say they're going to do. You don't want to get halfway through a project and have somebody leave because they can't get the financing to do it, number one. Number two, you want to have somebody who's got the history of doing this stuff, historical perspective and ability to do that. So we issued this request for statement of qualifications. It was issued by SAM Trans. It was developed in conjunction with the city of San Carlos. Those resolutions that we referred to previously, those were referred to in the document. There was a section in the document that talks about the city's goals and policies for development of the site, those goals and policies, and that section was written by the city, written by city staff incorporated into our document. And then the last thing that this document did, and I'm going over it briefly, obviously, so it was A, not to bore you, and two, to hit the high points, is at the time, there was no plans to do four tracks. There was none of this stuff we're hearing about high-speed rail or anything else, there were no plans to develop four tracks. But we knew that we needed to reserve the right to do that in the future in case the railroad was to be expanded. We didn't want to make a decision today that would impact negatively future generations. So what we did is, we sliced out properties. So from the property that you would go to now and you see up to the berm, that may be what you'd think of as the developable property if you weren't aware of this, we sliced out additional property from there to accommodate the possibility for four tracks. That was done from the day that we considered developing that land. So that was all in this, what we call SOQ. Okay. Let's fast forward now, September 23, 2004. We got a request for proposals, an RFP, that we now put out to the three finalists. After we found three developers that we felt had qualifications to do this, were served well enough to do this, we issued an RFP. Again, developed in conjunction with city staff. The selection criteria, and the reason I put this down here is, how did we choose the developer we went with? How did we choose the proposal that we went with? We had four criteria, 25% each. The first was consistency with the agency's concept of high-quality transit-oriented development project. We're going to be here, just like you guys are going to be here. We didn't want to see a fly-by-night development in here. We wanted to see a high-quality development constructed to the highest standards. It would be an example of what we expect development to be on the El Camino Grand Boulevard. So that was generally our concept. Secondly, consistency with city's goals and objectives. As noted, we referred back to the city resolution. The city wrote a whole section about what their goals and objectives for the development of this site was, were, was, whichever. That was included in their verbatim. Financial return to the agencies. As a steward of a public asset, our goal is to get a fair market return for our assets. So we're asking for fair market return on the property. Again, that's 25% of the goal. And then, soundness of the project performant proposed financing plan. What does that mean? That means that the people who come to the table to say they can develop that property really can do it. They're not telling us that they can do everything that we wanted in those first three set of criteria, but they don't have a sound financial plan to make it go. Public-private partnership, we have to have a strong private partner as a public entity. So we issued that document. And a little bit later, on March 18, 2005, we received two proposals. One of the finalists dropped out, they didn't feel that they could meet the stringent criteria that we had set, so we were left with sort of the strongest two. And it was really interesting, I was going back and looking at these proposals just to get a flavor for what was happening. Legacy at the time had suggested a proposal that had 319 residential units on that property, about 6,000 square feet of retail. At the same time, we had a proposal from a group called Blake Hunt/BR. They proposed 453 residential units with 3,000 square feet of retail. And it was interesting, I was going back through my notes of the day, and I looked at it, and it said neck and neck. But Legacy understands the fabric and what makes San Carlos tick more than the other guys do. It's not the only reason we chose them, but we did. So we had a 319-unit proposal chosen over a 453-unit proposal. We felt that was more encompassing of what the city was looking for. We decided to move ahead with Legacy. So after that, in November 2005, we officially went to the SAM Trans board to get official authority to negotiate with Legacy. And this is sort of an important concept, I think, because it's, everybody questions, what's SAM Trans' role, what's Legacy's role, how does this all fit together? So, I'm gonna tell you that right now. The negotiations resulted in Legacy obtaining an option to lease property from SAM Trans. So basically, what that means is, if Legacy exercises this option, they'll be able to enter into a long-term land lease from SAM Trans. And what will happen is, they will, we will own, SAM Trans will own the land. So SAM Trans will always own the land. Legacy over a 65-year period with two options that eventually take this up to 99, should they exercise those in the future. If they exercise the first option, will own whatever is built on that land. So SAM Trans will get a return on its hard asset, which is the land, Legacy will own the buildings, and they will own, operate, maintain them. And that lease agreement, if it's, if the option is exercised, will form the basis of this private-public partnership that we've tried to develop since the beginning of this process. So in the absence of any questions, what I'd like to do is pass this on to Sherri Scott, who is Legacy's architect, and she can talk a little bit about the evolution of the project and where we are today. Thank you.
If anyone in the back wants to sit, we have more seats on this side.
Hi, I'm Sherri Scott with Christianity Johnson Architects, and I've been involved in this project, not quite as long as Brian. I still have some hair left, which is good news. We'll see how long I keep that. But I've been involved in this project since the initial RFP was put out, and we teamed up with Legacy Partners to prepare the proposal for 319 units on the site. This was, proposal was started in 2004, and the RFP was returned in 2005. And since that time, there have been a lot of agencies, a lot of citizens who had a lot of interest in this project. There's a lot of factors that needed to be considered, environmental impacts, economic impacts, quality of life impacts, and then also just responding to the city's development standards, and then also SAM Trans requirements to operate transit in the area and also the train, as well- train, as well as what does it take to make a viable community from a new development standard? We want this to be a nice place for the new residents to live, as well as enhancing the community that already exists. So part of that process for us was to start with outreach meetings. And one of our first meetings was in 2006 with what was in the L'Oreal neighborhood. And I think that's where I initially met Scott Marsters. I think that was the first meeting there. Since then, we have met with Sierra Club, the Railroad Project Council, the State Historic Preservation Organization, many meetings with, of course, internally with design consultants, with SAM Trans, and with the developer as well. But over the course, since 2006, we've met with, I think we've had 34 different meetings that included public agencies, and those are in addition to all of the design consultant meetings that we had internally. And this was altogether information about the existing neighborhoods, what the concerns were, and what people wanted to see on the site. So I think this is a lengthy, again, starting in 2006 through 2010. And this list of meetings actually is posted on the city's website if anyone is curious about the sequence of events or how, again, we came about to the project that we are now. We had a lot of public input along the way. And I'll show you just an overview of some of the changes, some of the major changes. As also they presented that, we're going to break this into two phases. And so my intention for the presentation tonight is to give an overview of where we are with the project and the overall scope of the project, but some of the architectural details and, yes, some of the architectural details will save until the architectural review, which would be Phase Two of this review process. So the project as proposed now has actually reduced in scale from the original 316 units that was proposed. It's a 280-unit project now that is in eight different buildings across the site, starting from north all the way down to the Historic Depot. Six of those buildings have residential units in them, the first six. Actually, this doesn't work, does it? So we have six buildings with 280 units, and then we have Buildings 7 and 8, which have residential, sorry, retail and office space accommodated in those. There's a total in the residential of 456 parking spaces proposed, with additional parking for retail, and then the relocated Caltrain parking for 701 total parking spaces. This is a combination. The residential parking is predominantly in below-ground garages, and then there's some surface parking as well. And then the retail and Caltrain parking is on the surface at the southern portion of the site. Just to get oriented with the site, north is to your left, south is to the right. This is the Holly Street intersection, and so I'll focus first on the residential portion of the building, which is predominantly north of Holly Street. And the project is actually broken down into four residential buildings on this portion of the site. It's organized around courtyards that face El Camino, and so this provides kind of an open inviting embrace to El Camino. We want to have as much activity as possible on the street furniture. As you're familiar with the site now, it's an abandoned property. There's no activity. And so one of the major concerns with developing the site is to get as much activity on the street as possible, to really bring this part of the city to life. As part of that, these courtyards actually have shared stoops that step down to the public way. There's building entries with small plazas off of the sidewalk that are accessible to the public. And so between the building entries, the courtyard entries, and also private stoops that also face El Camino, there's a lot of pedestrian activity that's addressing El Camino. There's two main car entrances that go into the below-grade garages underneath these buildings. We tried to reduce the number of curb cuts also to enhance the pedestrian experience along El Camino as much as possible, to create this connectivity towards the downtown, towards the train station. So by combining the garages beneath these buildings, this building is Building 1, Building 2, Building 3, and Building 4, with only two garage entrances, again, that enhances the pedestrian experience and route. Looking at the elevation, again, the elevation for these buildings is just below. You can see that by creating the courtyards that face El Camino, we've broken the scale of the building down. So this isn't just one continuous elevation along. There's a series of breaks between the buildings. And this has been something that's really changed throughout the design of this project. I'll get into more detail on this later. Initially, we had laid out this project in a series of more equally-sized buildings that did not have a relationship to the street grid on the eastern side of the project, the eastern neighborhood. The street grid is shown here. This is one of the major things that we've gone back and redesigned as a result of our meetings with the L'Oreal neighborhood in greater east San Carlos, and I'll get into more detail on that later. The predominant style of the project is a mission style. We have sloped roofs, timber eve details, metal awnings and bays, predominantly stucco and finish. And this was taken at the direction of some of the other historic buildings that were in town that were mission style, and that was the direction that we were given from the city is architecture style that would be compatible with San Carlos. So talking about how this portion of the project has changed, establishing view corridors was one of the things that was really brought up in our conversations with the eastern neighborhoods. Again, as this building, or as this portion of the project was originally designed, there was not a relationship to the street grid on the eastern side. And so we went back to the drawing board and looked at how we could accommodate that. And so what we've done is actually create building breaks that line up with the street grid on the eastern neighborhoods. I will point out that this, we had tried to orient this garage entrance with Riverton. What you can't see on this drawing, and this was a struggle for us, is the main stormwater connection from the western side of the city to the eastern side of the city actually passes through an easement on this portion of the site. This was one of the alignments that we could not affect because we cannot disturb this portion of the site. And so what we've done, instead of having a completely open corridor here, is actually reduce the height of the buildings in line with the street grid here. And also, in plan, you can see, we pulled the building back from the predominant setback line here, an additional 12 to 15 feet in these locations. So we've stepped down in height, and we've also pulled back in plan to reflect the street grid on the eastern neighborhoods. One other thing that we've changed in the design since the initial inception was, to soften the view from the eastern side, there's been a lot of conversation about how much planting can we do. Again, the initial project boundary is this dash line here. As Brian Fitzpatrick was stating, that SAM Trans has reserved this property for operation of the train, and so this was not part of our project's scope. But after talking to the eastern neighborhoods, we went back to the drawing board, and we worked with SAM Trans to find out how much additional landscaping we could do on the east side and on the west side of the existing berm that's there. And so in the current proposal that was submitted in 2009, there's additional, we're calling it off-site landscaping, which basically maximizes the amount of landscaping that we can do on both sides of this berm and still allow the train to function. And so there's an additional scope provided in the project submittal that addresses that concern as well. Looking at the southern portion of the project, this is Holly Street here, and so this is the Historic Train Depot at the terminus of San Carlos Avenue. And the quality and the nature of the project as it goes to the Historic Depot really does change. It has a public function, really. The Historic Depot is a marker for the city. The way it's laid out right now, of course, this is just a sea of asphalt. It's just a parking lot with asphalt. There isn't a place to really pause and reflect, particularly since the train tracks are raised along the backside of the depot, which was initially the front side of the depot. And so we really wanted to address that and remedy that as much as possible, create a really, a destination, if you will, for the Historic Depot. And so the retail and office space, this is Building 7, this small building here, and Building 8 here. These buildings are retail on the ground floor with some office space up above. And so the intention here is to activate this space as much as possible by having retail that actually opens up onto this new public plaza. This plaza is pedestrian-only in nature, as the way it's proposed now, so that the cars and all the bus circulation would actually be towards the south of the site rather than right in front of the depot. So now, this space can be activated with, you know, farmer's market, fairs, outdoor dining, et cetera, rather than just being a drop-off or drive-through space. So in considering how to address the massing and the architecture around the Historic Depot, we met with the State Historic Preservation Organization to talk about our approach. And basically, the approach was that we shouldn't mimic the historic building, that the historic building should stand alone. We shouldn't abut directly the historic building. We should give it some space. We should also scale the buildings down as they approach the depot, and they reduce in height from three stories to two stories to one story at the depot. In addition, to maintain sightlines to the existing depot, the building steps down in height, but it also steps back in plan. So you can see there's a stepped-back shape to the building, which opens up the view corridor to the existing depot. So it's still on access, obviously, we haven't actually touched the depot, but the buildings that flank it don't inhibit the sightlines to the existing depot. Just to the north of this retail and public plaza, there's two smaller residential buildings. These are Buildings 5 and 6. These are residential buildings with one garage entrance here. This is also underground parking that serves these two residential buildings here. Very similar in style to the buildings further north. The units are oriented around courtyards, stoops and building entrances face El Camino to activate the sidewalk as much as possible. Looking at a little bit more detail into the plaza itself, you know, in trying to activate the new public plaza here, there's really an opportunity to reinforce the connection between the east San Carlos Avenue and the west San Carlos Avenue, and make this a safer transition to get back and forth to the train station and back and forth to downtown. Currently, the crossing Old County Road is, there is a crosswalk there. It's not necessarily, well, I wouldn't say well detailed. It's not entirely obvious in a car going down Old County Road that you've arrived at a destination. And so by enhancing these crosswalks, improving the paving pattern, which would be similar to the new paving pattern that we'd be proposing on the west side, we'd like to make a real link, a real connection between the east and west side, which we feel is a little bit lacking with the depot configuration as it stands now. Looking at the Historic Depot, again, this is the same elevation you can get it from San Carlos Avenue. The building steps from one stories to two stories, up to three stories on both sides, and it also steps back in plan. Initially, you know, these retail buildings have also had quite a bit of push and pull in terms of their size. How much retail was too much retail? Is it too much? Is it not enough? And so we met with, there was a retail study to determine what was an appropriate amount of retail. We didn't want to detract from the retail uses that are on Laurel Street, but we wanted to create enough retail so that it would actually create somewhat of a destination at the depot. And so after a lot of conversations, a lot of buildings that grew and shrank and grew and shrank, we're comfortable that this is the right amount of retail for the site, and this is the right location for the site, which is flanking the public plaza. On the far south portion of the site, this is where the Caltrain parking is relocated to. It doesn't extend all the way to Arroyo. There's some green space that's left before Arroyo here. In this space, this was extensively planned with SAM Trans to provide not only bus stops, there's bus layover spaces, which are separate from the bus stops. There's opportunity for shuttle stops. There's also, if I back up here, there's sort of a valet lane or a kiss-and-ride lane where you can drop off passengers adjacent to the retail space and then go find parking or go on to, you know, other activities for the day. And so this is just a surface parking lot for parking at the south end of the site. So going back to the north end of the site, I want to talk a little bit more about the conversations that we've had with the eastern neighborhoods, because I know that this is a big point of concern for the project. And so this is the residential project as seen from Old County Road. So this elevation is now the Old County Road elevation. You can see the existing Caltrain berm here. This is reflecting additional planting that we would be proposing. Again, there's some planting on the east side, some planting on the west side to help filter the views and just soften the view of the project from the west. Looking at the street alignments here, I'll get into more detail on these later, but this is Riverton and Inverness, actually, my labels are a little bit skewed there, but Sylvan and Springfield. And so you can see the building massing, stepping down in response to the eastern neighborhood grids. I'd also like to point out that the architecture on the eastern side of the project is, has all the same elements as the architecture on the west side. There really is no back to this project. This is a visible project from the eastern neighborhoods and from Caltrain, as well as from El Camino Real. And so the same sloped roof forms, outdoor balconies, bays, timber trellises, all these elements are the same elements that you would have on the El Camino Real frontage as well. So looking at the, in more detail, the elevation from the Old County Road from the eastern side, this is the Riverton elevation. This is Building 1. And this is what the portion of the site that we were not able to affect due to the existing constraints of the site, which is mainly that big stormwater connection that connects the western San Carlos to eastern San Carlos Underground. So since we were unable to move this drive aisle over, what we did is step the building back in plan. So the building steps back an additional 11 to 14 feet here in response to the Riverton Drive. It also steps down one story from four stories to three stories in this location to acknowledge that street intersection. Similarly, when we moved down to Building 2, this actually steps from four stories down to two stories at Inverness. And similarly, it steps back another 11 to 14 feet at this location as well. So it steps back in plan as well as in elevation to acknowledge that adjacency. At Sylvan, we were able to put the pool courtyard in line with Sylvan, and so this view corridor here is actually, it's actually completely open because we were able to realign the buildings around this alignment. Similarly, with Springfield, this is the second drive aisle here that we were able to align with Springfield. So this view corridor is actually entirely open because we were able to manipulate the site for that alignment. Again, you can see a little bit more detail, the same timbers, the same trellises, bays, and awnings that you'd see on the El Camino elevation. So these are some renderings. This is the El Camino street furniture here. And again, the intent is to activate the street as much as possible. We want this to be a safe pedestrian zone, a connection to downtown, a connection to the train station. Ways to do that is to get private stoops, as well as the main building entries facing El Camino. That was another change, actually, I should point out, that we made. Initially, we had the main building entries tucked in, addressed off of the drive aisles, so that as a guest would park a car, the entrance would have been off of the private drive. But it wasn't pedestrian-friendly. It was oriented only towards the cars that would be arriving as guests and not really addressing the city frontage. And so all of these building furnitures have their main entries facing El Camino, again, to just activate that street furniture as much as possible. In addition, at the main building entries, the landscaping steps back, and there's a small mini plaza at each of the main building entries. So as you're walking down the sidewalk, it's not just a five-foot planting strip next to the curb. There's a lot of variation in landscape, difference in setbacks, a lot of different experiences as you're walking down that project. experiences as you're walking down that project. From the eastern side, you can see the additional planting that would be on the eastern berm. Again, we've been working with Samtrans and with Caltrain to determine the maximum amount that can be planted there and still not interfere with their operations. So there's trees on the eastern side as well as on the western side. You can see the break in the buildings here. This is one of the view corridors. And similar details in the roof, bays, awnings, et cetera, that you'd see on the El Camino Circling back to the pedestrian plaza at the Historic Depot, we really feel like this is going to activate this space as a destination, instead of just a drive-through space now. It'll be a safer place for pedestrians and really make a gathering space. I think it'll be an opportunity for retail space to be successful, spilling out into the plaza on both sides, while still allowing a view of the existing Historic Depot. The materials on the proposed retail buildings, there are some stone elements that reflect the Historic Depot, but they're not used in the same way. We don't want to copy the Historic Depot. We want to respect the depot without trying to copy it, so that the depot truly stands alone. And that was reflecting the direction that we got from the State Historic Preservation And that's the project as it's submitted now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Michael Kay. I work for Atkins, and I'm a project manager on our SEQA documentation, and we're under contract with the city to provide the SEQA document. We have been working with the project since the beginning of the environmental process, which started with the notice of preparation, leading through the draft environmental impact report, and finally, as you know, the final impact report. What I'd like to talk about before we go into the environmental document is give you a quick overview of what the SEQA process is and the purposes of SEQA. SEQA was established in California in 1970, and at its heart, SEQA is a disclosure document. It is a document that is supposed to give information to the decision-makers and to the public on the potential adverse and beneficial impacts associated with the project being evaluated. The purposes include a potential to avoid significant environmental damage by either changes in the project itself or in the adoption and support of mitigation measures to help reduce potentially adverse impacts. Significance is really based on thresholds of significance that were also adopted by California Code of Regulations and the SEQA guidelines, and this forms the basis upon which the potential changes to the environment are measured. It's important to note that SEQA is mainly concerned with physical changes to the environment. The determination is based on objective factual data. In some cases, models are used. For example, in determination of adverse effects to air quality, you're probably very familiar with the modeling that is undertaken for transportation impacts that look at potential impacts to intersections, or roadways, or freeways, et cetera. And as I said earlier, SEQA really looks at physical changes to the environment caused by a project. Speculative changes, public controversy, public opinion, economic and social effects are not considered in the SEQA analysis. For example, with economic effects, if a project was to cut off access to an area, and that area went into economic decline, which led to a physical impact on the environment, that might be considered an adverse effect under SEQA. But strictly economical effects at all are not considered significant effects under And as I just said, social economic issues aren't discussed only if they cause physical damage, in the example I gave about lack of access to areas. There were a number of court cases in the past where approval of projects may have had an adverse economic effect on adjacent businesses. For example, if a Walmart was going to be constructed in a city, there was some concern that some of the smaller shops wouldn't be able to compete with Walmart prices. And so, there were challenges to SEQA, saying that that effect was a significant effect under SEQA. And the courts ruled that, in this case, it was an economic effect, and SEQA did not apply. However, if the economic effect was so strong that it led to closure of businesses, thereby the shopping area, for example, would fall into disrepair, would cause adverse physical changes in downtown that led to a rise in crime, for example, that itself would be a physical effect that could be effective, a significant impact under SEQA. But again, the direct economic effects are not considered SEQA adverse impacts. And again, with looking at what is determined to be a significant impact, it relies back on what is in the SEQA guidelines, again, adopted by the state, independent judgment that is included in the environmental document. And it's important to note that disagreement among experts on whether or not an environmental is significant or not, an adverse effect, does not automatically mean that it is an adverse effect. They, again, going back to court cases, lead agencies can decide which documentation they support the effects of the document. So, let's see. The other issue that SEQA needs to consider are cumulative impacts. Now, cumulative impacts are those impacts that combine with other projects that might be under consideration in the vicinity of the project. For example, typically, in a SEQA document, the, each of the areas that are evaluated have to do with the potential impacts associated with the construction of the project itself. That way, the decision-makers have the opportunity to examine what adverse effects would occur as a result of the project. But as you know, everything does not operate in a vacuum. So, we also look at the potential effects related to both the project that's being evaluated, as well as potential future projects in the vicinity of the project. For example, with the environmental document that we did for the San Carlos Transit Village, we also considered other potential projects either under consideration or planned within the city of San Carlos, as well as build out of the San Carlos general plan. One important thing to remember about cumulative impacts is, we do evaluate cumulative impacts, but only from the point of view of the project's contribution to that cumulative impact. And the mitigation measures proposed for cumulative impacts only mitigate the impacts associated with the project itself. The project is not charged with mitigating the entire cumulative impact, just what is considered cumulatively considerable as with the contribution of the project itself. For example, if a project was going to have significant impacts on an intersection near the project site, under a cumulative level, then we would determine what the contribution of traffic was to that intersection. The mitigation might be to add some turning lanes to the intersection in order to get the traffic to flow smoothly through the intersection itself, but the mitigation measure would only be responsible to pay, for example, for the portion of the project under which the contribution was made by the project itself. If the traffic to the intersection at a cumulative level, for example, was 10%, then the mitigation measure would be to pay for 10% of the improvement. Mitigation measures strictly are strategies avoided, taken to avoid, reduce, or eliminate project expected environmental damage. Again, with the example I just gave you about intersection improvements. If a project had adverse effects on an intersection, then the mitigation measure might be to make improvements to the intersection, or find a way to reduce the number of trips that were generated by a project, thereby reducing the effect on the intersection itself. In some cases, we also try to make changes to the project itself to avoid the mitigation, or the impact, excuse me. The, as I said, the first rule of thumb typically for SEQA is to avoid an impact. If you can't avoid the impact, then you minimize the impact with mitigation measures. And the mitigation measures are fully disclosed in the environmental document. Another step with the mitigation measures that's important is that mitigation measures can be described, but if they aren't implemented, then they really don't have any teeth. So under SEQA, a lead agency is required to adopt what's called a mitigation monitoring plan. The mitigation monitoring plan describes the impacts, the mitigation measures to reduce those impacts, who's responsible for implementing those measures, and when those measures need to be implemented in order to reduce, avoid, or minimize the impact. And this is something that the city adopts, and typically, the various cities' departments monitor the implementation of those mitigation measures to ensure that they've been implemented correctly, and that all measures have been taken to minimize harm. It's also important to acknowledge that while SEQA is a disclosure document, it's an opportunity for the public and for decision-makers to get an idea of what the potential adverse effects are from a project. That doesn't mean that you can't approve a project for which there would be significant impacts, or in cases where there are significant unavoidable impacts. But in such cases, the approving agency, in this case, the city of San Carlos, would be required to make what's called findings, as well as a statement of overriding considerations, whereby the city goes on record as saying that we have complied with SEQA. We have determined that a project would result in mitigation, or impacts for which mitigation is not feasible for various reasons. The statement of overriding consideration includes a description of why those mitigation measures are unfeasible, and it also includes reasons why the city is willing to overlook those impacts and go ahead and approve the project. I do want to point out that this does not apply to the San Carlos Transit Village, as I'll go into in a few minutes. The SEQA documentation prepared for this project has determined that there would be no significant unavoidable impacts associated with the project. SEQA also requires decision-makers to look at alternatives to a proposed project. Typically, the alternatives are a slight variation on either the location of the project or the project itself, and the alternatives are developed as a means to reduce the adverse effects associated with the project. The SEQA document also includes an evaluation of the no-project alternative. The no-project alternative itself acts as a baseline upon which the changes to the environment caused by the project itself could be determined. And there could be a wide range of alternatives included in an environmental document, but typically, they're narrowed by the goals of the project itself, and in the examples of whether alternative sites exist for the project, whether those sites are either, can be acquired by the project opponent, if they would support the proposed development. And again, the purpose of the alternative analysis is to make a determination on whether or not significant impacts associated with the project could be lessened based on, or through the implementation of alternatives to the project itself. And again, SEQA doesn't need to consider every conceivable alternative to a project, and there might be either financial limitations, economic limitations, legal, social limitations on why an alternative cannot be selected. And that's certainly legitimate under SEQA for whether or not an alternative should be denied or rejected. Now, for the San Carlos Transit Village, like I said, Atkins has been working with the city on the environmental documentation since the publication of the notice of preparation, which was issued in March of 2008. Notice of preparation is the first step in the environmental process. It is sent out to local, regional, and statewide agencies and the public to let them know what the project is, that the city is going to prepare an environmental document, and to garner public comment on issues that the public has with the project, and what issues should be evaluated in the environmental document. During the notice of preparation, the city received letters from both Caltrans, as well as the Greater East San Carlos Association on the proposed project. The draft EIR was circulated to the public in December of 2009, for, I think, a period of 48 days through February 2nd, 2010. A public hearing was held on the project. I think you're probably all familiar with public hearings. The project is presented to both the planning commission, as well as the public itself, and public input is given. And during the public review period for the environmental document, we received letters coming on the project from seven public agencies, four organizations, as well as 29 individuals. Those were the letters received on the environmental document. The listing there does not include the public comments that were given orally at the public hearing, but those comments are included in the transcript in the final, and responses to those comments are included in the final. The major comments on the draft EIR included trip reductions included in the transportation analysis associated with transportation-oriented development, the potential for spillover parking associated with the project, in particular, the relocation of the Caltrain parking lot, the alteration of views and visual characters of the project site and the area surrounding the project site, potential shadow effects, reflective noise from Caltrain, cumulative impacts associated with the California High-Speed Train Project. And there were also comments given on a revised alternative to the project itself, as well as the alternatives evaluated in the environmental document. In response to the comments received on the draft document, the final EIR, well, excuse me, let me back up a little bit. The draft EIR was circulated to the public in 2010, that, you know, obviously was two and a half years ago or more. And the completion of the final EIR was delayed because of the delay in the California High-Speed Rail project on the peninsula. There were a number of planning documents that were being developed by the authority for what the alignment would look like on the peninsula, in terms of how many tracks would be required for the high-speed rail system, as well as what the elevation of the tracks would be. There's been some discussion on if it would be underground, if it would be at grade, if it would be above grade. And the city thought it best to wait until there was some more firm decisions by the California High-Speed Rail Authority on what the high-speed rail project would look like through San Carlos, before we went forward with the final document for the San Carlos Transit Project. So again, that was one of the reasons for the delay between the draft document and the final document. The final document itself, which you've had an opportunity to look at, includes all the comments received on the draft document, both those written, as well as comments received from the public during the public hearing. Each of those comments is delineated in the final document, and a response to each of the comments is provided in the document. As I said earlier, there were some major comments submitted on the draft document, so we went ahead and developed what we call master responses. Rather than responding to similar comments over and over again, we take a set of comments and combine them, and try to respond to all of those in one master response. So the final document includes a master response to transportation, visual quality, noise, high-speed train cumulative analysis, as well as the revised massing alternative, as I mentioned earlier. One of the major issues also, again, was with the issue on visual quality, and what the project would have on the visual aspect of the project in the immediate vicinity. So, rather than try to revise the visual quality analysis that was presented in the draft document, we decided to go ahead and provide a full rewrite of that section in the final. So that's also included in the final document. So, that's also included in the final document. This was completed in early to July of this year, and made available to the public for review, which brings us up to the meeting tonight. I want to talk just a little bit about some of the master responses to the project, and a little more about some of the visual aspects. As I said earlier, the transportation master response really addressed two of the major issues that the public had. One was spillover parking effects, and then also the trip generation estimates and the effectiveness of the transportation development plan. For parking, the, parking included in the residential portions of the project were based on the December 2011 zoning ordinance that was recently adopted by the city. This is an update in the final document as compared to the draft document, and based on the, both the trip generation estimates, as well as the zoning ordinance, the, I probably need to go to the next slide there. The updated zoning code required 374 residential parking places, but the project itself is going to include 430 residential parking places. So, based on current zoning code, the, there's adequate parking available for the project for the residential parking places. I should also mention that similar to economic effects, lack of parking is not considered a, an impact under CEQA. The parking information provided in the environmental document is given for informational purposes only. Similar to the analogy I tried to make with economic impacts, and when they do become an adverse effect under CEQA, if a lack of parking was so severe that it increased traffic in a neighborhood, and raised the level of potential for accidents within a neighborhood because of an escaped traffic, then there could be a nexus between a lack of parking and a physical change on the environment. That is typically not the case in most analyses, and that wasn't the case with this document. The other potential parking issue that the public was concerned with is spillover parking associated with the relocation of the Caltrain parking lot. The Caltrain parking lot would be located, the closest slots in the Caltrain parking lot to the station itself would be 500 feet, and the furthest parking spaces from the Caltrain station would be 1,700 feet. We reference a number of studies in the final environmental document that were published, I believe, by BART, and also by the Valley Transportation Authority, on, in general, what patrons are willing to walk to get to a station from a parking lot, and it was determined that approximately 2,640 feet is reasonable. The San Carlos City has adopted a standard of approximately 1,742 as being a regional distance to walk from parking to a station. So, as you can see, the farthest parking place within the Caltrain parking lot is only 1,700 feet, so based on empirical studies done by other transit agencies, this seems reasonable for this project. If, the other, another alternative, though, for the spillover parking is the situation could be monitored in the neighborhood. If it appears that there is spillover parking in the neighborhood, then the city could consider a permit parking-only program for the neighborhood to help limit any potential parking for, from commuters in the East San Carlos neighborhood. As I said, the other issue that had to do with transportation was the effectiveness of the transportation demand management plan. The trip generation rates included in the transportation analysis came from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and this is a standard document that all transportation engineers use. It looks at the type of land use, including various factors of that land use. For example, residential has many different categories that, based on single-family homes, density per acre, multifamily units, et cetera. And it also considers proximity to transit, in looking at what the potential trip generation rates are. And based on the information in the ITS document, we were able to get a 22.5% reduction in trips generated by the project due to both the requirement and establishment of a transportation demand management plan, and we also took a 10% reduction associated with pass-by trips for the retail and business uses at the site. And what that means with pass-by trips, it means that not all the trips going to the retail or the business would be considered new trips. Some people who are traveling by the project on El Camino on their way somewhere else might stop in, and so those trips would not be considered new trips. That's what the 10% reduction is associated with pass-by trips. The other thing to note is that legacy partners would be required to monitor the situation for at least three years, and Legacy would pay for the monitoring to ensure that any of the transportation demand management plan features were having the desired effect on reducing the potential for trips. If it was found that these trips were not being reduced at the rate assumed in the document, then other transportation management plan features would be implemented on the project in order to achieve that reduction. Let's see, the visual quality master plan response, again, there were quite a few projects on the document, on the perceived adverse effects associated with visual quality. Visual quality is always a very difficult section of the environmental document to write. There's a lot of subjective feelings about changes to the visual landscape. It's very difficult to try to quantify those changes, and in, for the cases of visual impacts, the environment is based on a broad-based definition of what the visual environment is. If you can see the project, that does not mean that is an adverse visual effect. CEQA tries to look at the broad-based picture of visual impacts, not how the project itself would affect individuals from, as a visual perspective. Also, the courts have said, in challenges to environmental documents, that landowners do not have the right to access to visual quality over adjoining properties. It's like I said, visual is typically one of the hardest sections of environmental documents to write, because, you know, like I said, many people feel like if they can see a project, that must be an adverse effect, but you have to think about the larger picture, and whether or not there are defined view corridors as adopted by the city, if there's visual resources that the city thinks are important. If those are being blocked by substantial numbers of people, then you start to think about whether or not that can be considered an adverse visual impact. The visual quality master response also included much more detail regarding project consistency with applicable reservation, regulations. There was also a request for additional visual simulations from the public during the draft environmental review process, as well as some additional visual simulations. So, we included additional shadow simulations, as well as visual simulations. What I'd like to do is, the next couple of slides are both the visual simulations that were included in the environmental document, as well as the two new ones, and I want to briefly look at the shadow figures that were in the draft document, which also included the additional shadow analyses. So, these are, these are all fairly self-explanatory. I think most of us have seen visual simulations. The, you know, this is, this is a proposed project, it's used from El Camino Real in San Carlos. The top photo is its existing condition. You can see the Caltrain station there in the mid-range. The bottom is the simulation with the proposed project. This is a view from Old County Road and Sylvan Road facing west. You can see the Caltrain, Caltrain berm in the foreground, the existing view of the hill behind the project in the background. The lower figure is the project, or what the view would look like with the project. And again, these were the documents that were in the draft document. This is, again, the top is the existing view, the bottom is the proposed project. And this is the view from Laurel Leilai Park, facing west, the existing view above the fence with the berm, and then the bottom is the proposed project. Now, this is from a very similar vantage point. This is from third base within the park. This is one of the new visual simulations included in the final at the request of the public. Since you're closer to the project, this just gives you a slightly different perspective. We go, let's back to the previous. This is from further back in the park. Again, this is closer to the project itself. This is a simulation of the project from Holly Street and Old County Road, looking to the northwest. This was not in the draft document, but this was included in the final at the request of a member of the public. Again, the top is existing, and the bottom is with the proposed project. I think this is a duplicate. This is a view of the project looking down El Camino, from the north to the south. Again, looking down El Camino to the south. Go back here a second. These next figures are, represent what the shadows would be like associated with the project. We provided a shadow figure for four times of the year, which represent the winter solstice, or the first day of winter, the vernal equinox, which is the first day of spring, the summer solstice, the first day of summer, and then finally, the autumn equinox, which is the first day of fall. Again, I should preface this by saying that there are no standards of significance under CEQA for when to determine if shadow was an impact. As you can see, the winter solstice, this is, this is what the shadows would cast at 10 o'clock, noon, 3 o'clock, as the sun starts to set in the west, you can see the shadows start to grow across Old County Road. By 4 o'clock, the shadows have started to extend into the buildings along Old County Road, the residences. By 5 o'clock, the sun has set, and so no, no shadows are being cast. Again, the 4 o'clock and the 5 o'clock are the two time periods which were not in the draft document, but we had, went ahead and included those figures at the request of the public. This is what the shadows would be cast the first day of spring, so if we, let's see, go back to the previous slide. You can see that during the springtime, the sun has started to get higher in the sky, so the shadows cast are not as long as they are in the winter. At 5 o'clock, the shadow, the sun does set later, but at 5 o'clock, the shadows are not reaching across Old County Road. This next slide is the first day of summer, and the sun is at its highest point in the sky on the first day of summer, so the shadows are going to be very short. As you can see here, at 5 o'clock, the shadows do not extend across Old County Road. And at the autumn equinox, the sun has started to get lower in the night, in the skies, so the shadows, again, are getting longer as you go back to winter. The final document also includes more details on noise. One of the issues raised by the public was the potential for reflective noise associated with the project. It was thought that with the construction of these buildings next to the Caltrain tracks, that every time a Caltrain went by, the noise would bounce off the walls of the building and increase the noises on the neighborhood to the east of the Caltrain tracks. Some of the things to consider with reflective noise is typically what's required to get the maximum amount of reflective noise is a structure that is twice as high as the noise source itself, a solid wall that is very smooth. If you think about throwing a ball against a wall, it's kind of the same issue. If you've got a flat, smooth wall, the ball is going to bounce back a lot harder. This is not the case with the proposed project. There's a lot of articulation to the buildings. There are gaps in the buildings themselves, among, between the various buildings, so we're not looking at a condition where you could get the maximum potential for reflective noise. The other issue is to consider that the, if there is reflective noise, the source of the noise itself is where the, it's being reflected. The source would be farther away from the receivers than the main noise, which would be the train itself, so that also reduces the sound itself due to the reflection. We did standard noise modeling on the potential for reflective noise, and found that there would be a slight increase in noise, but it would be along the lines of 1 dBA to 2BA, dBA increase. This is below the significance threshold of a 3-decibel MP increase. Therefore, it was determined that this is, would not be a significant impact associated with the project. As I said earlier, there was some discussion in our comment letters on the document on whether or not the project considered the cumulative impacts associated with the Caltrain, or the high-speed train system. As I mentioned earlier, the final document was put on hold until we had more information about the Caltrain, the high-speed train system. Prior to the completion of the final document, the California High-Speed Rail Authority came out with their revised business plan. They also had an alternative analysis that was complete, which gave us more information on what the high-speed train system might look like through San Carlos. As I said earlier, in the CEQA overview, the San Carlos Transit Village project is required to look at the potential for cumulative impacts associated with development of different projects in the vicinity. However, it's not required to provide mitigation measures for those development projects, other than the San Carlos project itself. The revised business plan for the California High-Speed Rail Authority through the peninsula is assuming that there would be shared use or blended system in the Caltrain corridor. It's not yet known, but there may be some additional crate separations. There might have to be some passing tracks, segments along the peninsula, in order to accommodate both high-speed trains, as well as the existing and proposed Caltrain system. The, and, alternative analysis for high-speed train, though, looked at four different scenarios that included the construction of four sets of tracks on the peninsula. The worst-case scenario for a high-speed train would be a four-track aerial viaduct through San Carlos. This would recommend, this would reflect the greatest physical footprint and physical change within San Carlos. So, for conservative analysis, that's the alternative that we used when we considered the cumulative effects of our project cumulative with the high-speed, high-speed train project. As I said earlier, the current business plan for high-speed train is not considering a four-track aerial viaduct, but our analysis included this as the worst-case scenario, so anything less than that would be a lower adverse effect than what we were including in environmental documents. So, that acts as a baseline for the worst that could possibly happen. The, as I said, we had more detail, more information about what could potentially be constructed as part of the high-speed train system. We included that analysis in the master response, but that did not change the conclusions of the draft EIR. There would be no adverse effects associated with cumulative effects of San Carlos Transit Villas project with the Caltrain, or the California High-Speed Rail Authority project. As I said earlier, CEQA does not require that we consider all the effects of the California High-Speed Rail project on the project itself. That is a responsibility of the California High-Speed Rail Authority, if and when they propose any improvements on the peninsula. They'll have to consider the adverse effects of that project on all the existing projects within San Carlos, as well as the San Carlos Transit Villas project, should that be approved and constructed. Let's see, finally, we had a revised massing alternative master response. One of the comments we received during the draft document was an alternative by Locarcht David Crabbe. The project proponent in the city looked at this alternative, and determined that it didn't meet the goals of the project. There were some minor issues with the project, but as submitted by Mr. Crabbe. However, it, some of the features of this alternative However, it, some of the features of this alternative did have merit. So we developed what we referred to as a revised massing alternative, included a reduction in the height and bulk of the buildings of the proposed project, and increased the heights of the buildings adjacent to Holly Street, increased the separation between the buildings to try to open up what's referred to as the view corridors, and there's reduction in the number of units from 280 with the proposed project down to 250 units. The results of our analysis for the revised massing alternative is that there would be similar, but effects of this alternative with the proposed project, however, they would be slightly reduced over what was evaluated in the proposed project. We have some visual simulations of the revised massing alternatives. This, actually, Joe, excuse me. What I did here was this, this is the proposed project itself. This is a, one of the earlier slides, and we've got a, a massing diagram with both the reduced intensity alternative at the top, as well as the revised massing alternative at the bottom. And just for comparison purposes, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way. This is the proposed project. The top is reduced intensity, the bottom is revised massing. So as you can see, with the revised massing, there's a little, there's more of a break between the buildings from this location, and there's also a reduction in the height of the, the, the buildings at this location. This is a, this next series of figures are also in the final document, and what we tried to do is create a profile of the proposed project, the reduced intensity alternative and the revised massing alternative as viewed from the east. The top is a profile of the proposed project. The middle, pink color, is the reduced intensity alternative, and finally, the bottom is the revised massing alternative. Also in the document of the next two figures, this shows the heights of the various buildings and features of those buildings associated with the different alternatives. And then we've got a comparison, it's hard to read at this level, but that's also in the final environmental document. And what this final figure shows is the heights of the alternative compared with the height of the proposed project. It's superimposed over the alternative. What, what's shown here is the, the transparent area is the proposed project, and the colored area is the specific alternative. So in the middle here, the, the yellow is the revised massing alternative, and it provides a comparison with the transparency for what would be included in the proposed project itself. So what we attempted to do here is just give a better comparison of the different alternatives included in the final document. So, this wraps this up, wraps up my portion. I know people are probably anxious to submit comments, but the final EIR represents both the draft document and the final document is the entire CEQA record for the proposed project. As described in the final EIR and the draft EIR, the proposed project could result in potentially significant impacts to land use and planning, visual quality, transportation, air quality associated with the construction of the proposed project, and increasing greenhouse gas emissions, noise, cultural resources, biological resources, and hazardous materials. Now, it sounds like a mouthful, but this is, I think, typical for a development of this, this nature, that there is a potential for significant impacts. However, as described in the environmental document, there are readily available feasible mitigation measures that could be applied to the project that would reduce each of these potentially significant and significant impacts to a level of less than significant. And as I said earlier, the city will be required to adopt a mitigation monitoring reporting program following the conclusion of the project. If the project is approved, this program would ensure that all these mitigation measures are implemented at the correct time to the satisfaction of the city, and the city would not be required to adopt a statement of overriding considerations associated with the project. The city would create findings, but the findings would outline what the impacts are, why those significant impacts would be avoided or reduced to levels of significance. And that is the end of my presentation.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, so as Mr. K suggested, the EIR studies the cumulative effects with the high-speed rail and the Caltrain electrification. And so I'd like to ask Sam Trans to make a comment on the relationship and the development potential of those two scenarios. So if I could ask Sam Trans, just as a final point to the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seamus Murphy, Director of Government Affairs for Caltrain. Just want to shed some light on where we are with Caltrain modernization and high-speed rail. I know it's been an evolving project, and I think we can add, from what it sounds like, we can add this project to the list of projects that have been sufficiently confused over the last couple of years by high-speed rail. Where we are is we have two distinct phases of the high-speed rail project, and the first phase does not deliver high-speed rail to the Caltrain corridor. It doesn't include any changes to the existing track configuration. It would simply modernize the Caltrain corridor as it exists today, add an overhead catenary system and an advanced signal system in order to allow us to run faster, more efficient electric vehicles with performance advantages that will improve Caltrain service and actually improve and benefit surrounding neighborhoods by providing quieter trains that will serve stations more frequently between San Francisco and San Jose. And those benefits has, have actually been, been studied in terms of the economic utility that they would provide, and they've been determined to provide a billion dollars in economic value and increased property values throughout the corridor. So there are significant benefits associated with that project, and that's the, the project that was funded by the legislature as a part of the initial allocation and appropriation of high-speed rail bond funding. Additional improvements beyond Caltrain modernization would be required before high-speed rail could travel north of San Jose onto the Caltrain corridor, and we've done some work in conjunction with the authority to identify what improvements would be necessary. We know that with the existing track configuration, we can accommodate up to two high-speed rail trains in each direction without any additional tracks and without, without adding passing tracks in any portion of the corridor. If we want to increase high-speed rail service beyond those levels, then we would require some additional tracks, passing tracks between seven and 10 miles long, and they could be located in various locations on the corridor. They don't have to be located in San Carlos. We're looking at five different locations. Two of those would, would be in San Carlos, and three would be in other parts of the corridor. Those improvements, it's important to keep in mind, wouldn't be needed until 2029, so for, and for the better part of two decades. All that's required on this corridor is Caltrain modernization. That's all that's funded. The legislature is going to have, is going to have to approve additional funding before any improvements that would deliver high-speed rail to this corridor are built, and those, those improvements would have to go through a separate environmental review process that would consider all of the impacts that, that, that that project would have on surrounding communities. So hopefully, that provides some clarity that, to that issue. I'm happy to, to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the overview of the project.
Now, we're going to move on to public comment, and we're actually going to reserve a little bit of time later in the evening for commissioners' questions to the presenters tonight. So I will start with, and for any of you that would like to speak, I encourage you to sign, fill out a speaker's request form and hand it to one of the staff down here. And I will take them in the order that they were actually given to me. And the first speaker is Bonnie McClure. And I will line up the individuals after that. Tim Ryan is after that, and Harrison Race is after that. So let's start with Bonnie.
I have two, two points. This, I'm Bonnie McClure, representing the Sustainable Land Use Committee of the CR Club Loma Prieta Chapter. The first question was that I noticed that there are no affordable units noted here. It's all market rate apartments. And I would like an answer, when you come back with the answers, to why there's no affordable units, and what happened to our 15%? And is this a result of the redevelopment agency going west or what? Now, the second point is that under the new alternative, they've omitted 31 units, and they have three-bedroom, two-bath units. I hardly see why a person who can afford a three-bath, two, three-bedroom, two-bath unit would want to live between the highway and the railroad tracks. I think that you're looking more for affordability for people who need to be near public transit, our teachers, our fire and police officers. We need to have something for everybody, yes, but we have lots of high-rise. We have some three-bedroom, two-apartment units in San Carlos that are still up for sale, and I would suggest that you could, in the space of a three-bedroom, two-bath apartment, you should be able to configure two units of one-bedroom, one-bath, which would be a lot more affordable and a lot more important for many people on the peninsula. So I really would like to see that considered. And that would make, mean no change to the final EIR because the impact would be 280 units or less, but it would mean a lot of difference in air quality as we would be providing public transit for more people. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. I just want to let my fellow commissioners be aware of the fact that all of the comments that are being talked about by the, the public are being recorded over here, and we will get copies of those and hopefully, some answers to some of those. Tim?
Thanks, Scott. Commissioners, Tim Ryan, 339 Fairfield Drive, 35-year resident. I think that this is the, the biggest threat to my neighborhood in the 35 years I've owned this home. San Carlos needs to contribute. People are moving to the Bay Area. Hopefully, we're going to actually get out of this recession and will create some jobs, and people need to live somewhere. And we do need to, as a city, be a part of that equation. Transit-oriented housing, it's awesome. I, I live in the area. I get on Caltrain. It's, it's not a really good service, but I get on my bicycle and I go to work in San Francisco and it gets me home. Not always on time, but I use it in transit-oriented development, I think is something that, that is something for San Carlos. But this project is, is just not it. When I worked at the northern part of, of this footprint, almost 40 years ago, at a Christmas tree lot, it was great. You know, I made about four bucks an hour, but that's all that really worked there was a Christmas tree lot because it is a lousy footprint. You cannot get a good project out of a lousy footprint, and you can't change the footprint, and that is, that's my main problem with this as an east-side resident. I mean, I don't have the shadows in my property, not a problem, I'm on Fairfield Drive, but, but other people do. This is, is a poor footprint. It's a big, long, linear neighborhood. People are not going to gather at the, right in front of the depot there where the buses are, where all the traffic is, and where the, the pollution is spewing out. No, it's not going to do that. It's a big, long, linear neighborhood with no central community that makes it a good neighborhood. You can't do that on this type of a footprint. This is just simply too tall, and there are too many impacts in our neighborhood. And when I bought my house, there was talk at City Hall that, that the city was going to somehow fix Holly Street. 35 years, it hasn't happened. It's continued to get worse. When the hospital goes up, it's going to continue to get worse, and you're going to put 480 more cars. And some people are going to get on that train, sure, but many are not. They're going to get onto Holly Street. And to mitigate that, I don't see how that is possible whatsoever. 1,700 feet, people are going to park their car and walk 1,700 feet to the train? Just consider that, please. Your CEQA man and, and the other gentleman in the expensive suit say that, yeah, we're going to have this blended train when, when we finally get high-speed rail. The management and the financing of high-speed rail in California is so precarious that you cannot rely on any of that. Consider what, what that will mean to our neighborhood. High-speed rail, the hospital, the continued traffic impacts on Holly Street, and now 280 units. No, no, not a nice mixture of owner occupied and rental, but all rental, living between the trains and El Camino. I, I just, I just think that this is too big of a threat. There are too many unanswered questions, and, and I just ask you to reject it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Harrison Race, followed by Paul Maginetti and Sam Hirschberg.
My name is Harrison Race, and I live on Everness Drive. I have lived there for roughly 30 years. I had given you a handout, number one, and number two. Number one is looking at the intersection of Old County and Everness from back about where I, my house is. And as you can see, I have a line drawn across that says 20 feet high, and in the center of that, you see a circle. That is the signal for the railroad, which is roughly 20 feet high. The berm itself is 10 feet high, and the signal is another 10 feet. And I drew another line roughly 50 feet high. And as you can tell, I have now lost all my view of the hill in our neighbor's city of Belmont. Number two, picture number two, just looking straight up the street. Again, I have the lines drawn, but I did not fill in the buildings, I did not have time to do that. They plan on having a building on with an entry in between the two buildings, which means I will have a tunnel view looking up the street instead of having a wide view. I'll just have a tunnel. And that, to me, is not acceptable. Number two, it was mentioned about parking for the Caltrain people of 17, up to 1,700 feet. Let's change that to make it a half-mile. Now, nobody's going to walk. 1,700 feet, oh yeah, that's feet, but let's make it a half-mile, which is what it really And the buildings themselves are, if I remember reading on the, or looking at the website, they were going to be 50 feet high to the center of the roof line, which means it's about 55 to 60 feet by the top, time you get to the top of the roof. Now, is that measured from street level? Or is it measured from some other imaginary level up to and including the berm of the railroad? Which means that the height of the buildings can vary by about 10 or 15 feet, depending on where you say the baseline is. And finally, walking from the village, from all those nice, beautiful, high-expensive apartments that nobody's going to be in, or if they are, they're going to have two and three cars, which there's no room to park. You're going to walk to downtown San Carlos, or uptown San Carlos, depending on if you go down or up. How are you going to get there? You're going to have to cross the intersection of Holly and El Camino. Have you ever tried crossing that intersection? It's almost impossible unless you're in a car. I am thoroughly opposed to this project. I would love to see something in there, that area, more in line of commercial, light business, things like this, that will give you some more parking. They talk about underground parking, that's fine, leave it there. So people visiting the business area in that area could park, but I can't see people living there and not causing a horrendous problem for the citizens of San Carlos. Right now, San Carlos bills itself as the city of good living. I believe this project will no longer make it a city of good living. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul Maginetti, followed by Sam Hirschberg, and then Laura Peterhans.
Paul Maginetti, I live on Springfield Drive. I want to talk a little bit about the environment on the site itself. Let me preface this with a little story. There was a man on his hands and knees under a lamppost. A friend walked by and says, "What are you doing?" So he said, "Well, I lost my watch." He said, "Well, I'll help you. Where did you last see it?" And he said, "Oh, under those bushes over there." He said, "Why are you looking here?" "Well, the light is better." And to me, that is the problem I have with this EIR. I had asked the question about the biological resources there. I had looked at the draft EIR and it said the endangered species that were not living there, and I asked the question, "Well, what does live there?" And the response in the final EIR seems to be, "Well, nothing really that matters under Sequa." But the real answer is almost nothing lives there, and the reason is because the land is poisoned. I'll stick with just one toxic waste, arsenic, a potential carcinogen. They tested for only some of the samples along the former rail spur that is along the east side of that property where they had arsenic-soaked rail ties and they sprayed it with lead arsenate. It's an herbicide. In fact, it kills everything, not just plants. And the few results were lumped in with all the other results from the rest of the site in the conclusion that it was all naturally occurring. Well, the fact is that that arsenic was put there by man, not by God. So I urge you to make sure that whatever goes here, that they take this one chance to clean up that land for the next 99 years or forever to make sure they get those toxics from 100 years of rail use out of there. A little history on how that got there. It was made by a crystal chemical company on land leased from Southern Pacific. They worked from '68 to '81, then they went bankrupt. It's now a superfund site, so the taxpayers are paying for that. So the question I want to ask is, if this toxic waste is not properly remediated, who owns that waste? Is it going to be Samtrans or Legacy? Or is it going to be the city when we pump it out of our stormwater, out of the Pulgas Waste Station? So if this EIR is approved, I want it approved in a way so that these toxics don't become the city's problem and my problem, having to pay for it later on.
Thank you. Sam?
Good evening, planning commissioners. I guess my point is you plan and you plan again. In 1998, height was the major concern of the railroad study. They, you know, they came to a conclusion of, as a guideline, 50 feet, but it was a guideline and it wasn't fast and hard, and it was really contentious at that time, and it's been contentious ever since. Height is the biggest issue. You have to go on best available information, and that changes over time. And so the biggest problem with this development, as I see it, is too much density. Appreciate the Planning Commission is going to consider the comments raised by concerned individuals and organizations like the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. You are a deliberative body and you don't need to rubber stamp anything. You need to think, think things through. In terms of design review, the environmental impacts, that should all be happening with the approval of the entitlements at one time and not segregated. You don't want the EIR to be approved, the appeal period expire, and then questions about environmental impacts are resolved at the city council level, and they should have been addressed at the EIR level or questions about design, bulk, height of structure. And examples, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, when it was proposed, it was three times the size it ended up being. And that environmental impact review and the thorough consideration by city officials was very important, making it to a more manageable size. At that point, it was approved, but it was, it had to be reduced in scope. Otherwise, nothing on the east side would have been able to be developed. One thing we really are concerned about is our recent experience with the In-N-Out Burger development, where we had commented on the, on the negative declaration at the Planning Commission, at the city council, on the height of the sign, the brightness of the sign, and our concerns were ignored. And in the back of people's homes, you have large glaring neon signs. We had to negotiate on our own with, with In-N-Out Burger, who we're actually a pleasure to work with, and we were able to negotiate street trees and reduction in the, in the light. But really, that's your job. You're the deliberative body that's supposed to do some of this problem-solving so we don't have to deal with impacts after they've occurred. You know, the downtown urban design guidelines kind of slipped in this 50-foot without really studying the potential impacts. And I think that's the purpose of this environmental impact report, is to look at all those impacts and then figure out, is the density really need to be zoned that dense? There's a, there's a number of impacts that have been identified, discussed in this document. There was $50,000 spent on legal review to kind of argue away a number, a number of the impacts, but that doesn't diminish our concerns about the impacts. And so I would encourage you to take those seriously. Just for example, permit parking was discussed. That, that's going to foist an impact on the neighborhood for this development if that's a requirement in the future for city residents on the east side to pay for because of a smaller parking standard that was established for this development at 1.5 parking spaces instead of what the city average is. Concerns about high-speed rail are really a concern, you know, those bypass tracks along El Camino Real were to facilitate the berm, but now you have high-speed rail. Where are you going to put bypass tracks? Where are you going to put a staging area? How is that going to impact Old County Road? Are you going to need to use Old County Road? Are you going to need to punch through on the east side on Fairfield, all the way through to industrial, to be able to have access during construction? Are you going to have to take people's homes to be able to do that? I think that needs to be evaluated at this point in time. We really need to be aware that the height of the west side and the height of the east side are significantly different. The height of, the height of the berm, 10 feet, and the height of El Camino Real, 15 feet higher. So any, it's like you say potato, I say patata. You say 40 feet, I say 50 feet. You know, it's going to, you're going to have a height differential, and so no matter what you try and do, it's always going to be higher on the, on the east side, and you just need to be sensitive that that's a real concern of ours, and we're not just making it up. You know, when the berm was created, it evaluated 10 different options, and it was at great expense, reduced in height, to preserve our residents' views of the hills. So then the EIR goes on to explain that not only because the berm exists today, that these higher structures don't really create any more separation of our community east and west because you already have a separation of community. And then if you add high-speed rail with a four-track aerial viaduct, it's not, not even any more significant because you're already separated. You know, it kind of adds insult to injury. At one point in the zoning regulations, it was proposed to have a different noise standard on the east side than on the west side. That was withdrawn, but that's the kind of concern that we're really concerned about on the east side, is are we being held to a different standard than would be held elsewhere? I would also add that this is not, this is, you have a lot of density in a very small place between El Camino Real, Caltrain, tracks, high-speed rail. If you really wanted to have more affordable multifamily housing, you could put it in areas within a quarter-mile of the Caltrain station. During the general plan and the zoning, our neighborhood association proposed putting more housing as, as a transition around our neighborhood, but that was rejected. That would be within a quarter-mile. You could go back and look at that again. Nothing's hard and fast. You can make a better decision based on best available information. I'm not saying that's the only location. You could take a look at the Samtrans building and turn that into, to a higher-density housing. I'm going to make just a few more comments and then I'll be done. In terms of parks, there is a Park-in-Lu fund. We'd like to make sure there's a nexus between the impact of any residential and where the benefit goes. Palo Alto Medical Foundation gave a million to the city and it was spent on the west side. There were needed improvements, and there continue to be needed improvements at L'Oreal Park, in terms of a community center, additional parkland, and we've even identified a parking, a park opportunity where there was an old firewood lot on Old County Road and Taylor. We'd really like to see that gap closed in terms of a benefit to the community of this development. Lastly, I'd just like, well, I, one, two points. One is I'd encourage mediation between, we haven't, our neighborhood hasn't talked to the developer for two and a half years. There's a lot of points of concern, and I really think that we need to have some facilitated mediation to try and come to some, some conclusion. We don't want to see a decrease in our property values or quality of life, and appreciate your thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Laura Peterhans, and followed by Tim Hilborn and Dmitry Vandelos.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Laura Peterhans. I live in Belmont. I'm a member of Peninsula Interfaith Action, which is a coalition of 30 religious communities in San Mateo County and northern Santa Clara County. And we have been very, very concerned for many, many years about the lack of affordable housing and the lack of rental housing period within our county. And that's why I'm here to speak tonight. I have been following this development. Along the way, I've been at a couple of other meetings previous to day, to today, and in general, am in favor of developing this property for housing. However, as the lady by the name of Bonnie mentioned, very, very concerned that there is no affordable housing within it. I see some ways to mitigate height concerns and so forth, parking concerns, by making a section of the development that's closest to the transit center, be an affordable senior citizen building with less parking requirements. And perhaps accessibility to some kind of a mom-and-pop grocery store in that little development. I think that's one of the mitigating things that could be done that would reduce the need, not that there isn't a need and concern about overflow parking, I think is something that, that the community certainly has to consider. I worked for quite a long time, four years, on a royal court at the school that was there many, many years ago, and we had the gas shortage. And I walked from there to the train station with no difficulty. I think that's probably the 1,700. And I was, grantedly, younger, but I did walk three, three miles through the Belmont Hills today. So I think it's feasible for the walkers. Now, other people may need to have other ways of transportation, but we, as PIA, we really welcome this project being on the corridor by the train station. I would also encourage Legacy to look into the possibility of joining efforts in the Regional Heart Housing Endowment Regional Trust, of which San Carlos is a member, to access some of the funds that are available there for affordable rental housing. I do hope that Legacy will talk with Heart Housing Endowment Regional Trust. We've created in the last five years over 800 units of affordable housing. I sit on Heart's program committee. I know it's feasible, so please think of that as another possible mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Tim Hilborn, Hilborn.
Members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to welcome the new, new members here as well, and I just wanted to ask, I know Ben talked to Al about a little additional time with my presentation. Is that okay?
What timeframe are you looking at?
Maybe five minutes, seven minutes, something like that.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, my name is Tim Hilborn, resident of 1052 Silken Drive, and I would just like us all to understand that when, when we're talking about this EIR, the draft EIR and the final EIR, is the fact that when we bring Sequa into the picture, is that Sequa is only a legal benchmark that is used in developing these environmental impact reports, and I think we need to understand that. In this environmental impact report, you're going to find that this defers a lot of decision-making to the Planning Commission and the city council. I would really, really urge the city council and the Planning Commission to research Sequa and even some of the, the history of some of the legal decisions in relationship to this kind of development. I've done some searching on that myself, and there's some interesting decisions that pertain to this. I'm going to go ahead and get started. First of all, just so we understand this, this is my response to the response from the draft EIR. So I am basically responding to the master responses. So I'll go ahead and start with master response number one, which is transportation. And these are quotes out of the, out of this. The first quote from the final environmental impact report is, "There's no evidence that secondary traffic or air quality impacts would result as a consequence of vehicle parking legally on adjacent streets. On-street parking does not relate to significant environmental issues and therefore needs not be included in the EIR." My response to that is, we have, we have a lot of evidence that overflow traffic and parking already does exist in the GSC neighborhoods. The fact that this is not even being considered in the EIR is a major flaw and an oversight. This response does not consider the program parking or the enforcement costs incurred to the city for the revised final impact analysis report. And also, there's another, this is just one of many examples of impacts not considered in the financial impact report and passed on as not an impact according to the final EIR as well. Also, the proposed project, as far as a transportation study plan, identifies a total trip reduction of 22.5% of this development, with 10.1% due to close proximity and use of public transportation. And then it goes on to say that the revised massing alternative, which is in the, the master response, would generate 2,540 daily trips. So what, what I'm not sure about is that these two statements, which are pulled directly from the final, final EIR, contradict themselves. How can you have a total trip reduction of 22.5% with a development generating 2,540 daily trips, adding a cumulative amount of 22% traffic, guaranteeing the signalization of two more intersections? So I'd like the Planning Commission to really look into that because to me, that does not make sense, and that's a major flaw in this final EIR. Also, there's an alternative analysis report that the train platform could potentially be relocated under the HST project from existing location to the south, and the new platform would be approximately from Arroyo Avenue to Cherry Street. And as we said earlier, the city of San Carlos defines acceptable walking distance as about a third of a mile. My question is, the station will potentially be moved furthest from the residential units, and this will have a significant amount of further for people to walk, and would people really walk from building one all that way? That's actually going to be well over a third of a mile. So I'd like us to look into that. Master response number two talks about visual quality. And basically, what they've come out and said is that the portion of this master response explains that the proposed project is consistent with visual, visual policies and regulations. Consistency is addressed in terms of building heights, view corridors, compatibility with a historic depot, and scale and mass. Then it goes on to say, nonetheless, the revised massing alternative would still develop the project site and substantially increase onsite development and activity with mixed uses. Like the proposed project, this alternative would result in conflicts with policies of the general plan that were adopted for avoiding or mitigating significant environmental impacts. With mitigation, the revised massing alternative would be consistent with the general plan policies and actions. I could not disagree more with that. My basic response is that their response to my concerns about height massing for the San Carlos Transit Village relies solely on this one revised massing alternative and for their responses. There's little to no mitigation provided with, with this revised massing alternative. My question is, how can the final impact report state that in its compliance with sites-specific guidelines in the city's general plan, primarily policy LU-811? This has to do with the height of the buildings, especially buildings one through four facing Old County Road according to this alternative. They have almost the same amount of height as the proposed project with a few small sections under 30 feet. I've taken a lot of time and looked at each one of these, and I encourage you to do that as well. As stated in the site, site-specific- As stated in the sites-specific guidelines, they are to apply architectural techniques such as stepped building stories and varying heights to break up massing in the bulk of the buildings. The majority of these buildings are 38 to 60 feet high along Old County Road across from 13 to 15-foot-high residences with 125-foot setback. Instead of including this section, the final impact report, again, proposes a revised massing alternative that still has most of the buildings with much more density and height than stated in this section of the general plan. Although the new alternative slightly widens view corridors, the project will continue to have major impacts and be out of alignment with the land use elements in the general plan, of which I've already commented on, that is still very much a wall effect with extremely limited views of Polgus Ridge and other hills. Is this truly more compatible? So this section nor any other section I found in the final impact report, final environmental impact report, also does not acknowledge the fact, and I have only heard this once tonight, that the elevation along El Camino of the proposed site of the San Carlos Transit Village is almost 10 feet higher than the elevation of Old County Road. And the east side community, so this technically adds another eight to 10 feet on our side when we're looking at these buildings. This is something I'd like you to consider as well. Also, the massing of the revised alternative only has 30 units less than the proposed project from 280 to 250. One of the questions and what I saw tonight was they're talking about 260 units. So I'm a little bit confused. Are we really using this revised massive alternative to designate what is actually going to be going in as a development? There's more things about shadowing and those kinds of things, but I'll let Dmitry go into that. My last one is master response four for high-speed rail. And basically, what it states is, nonetheless, for purposes of this analysis, this document assumes that the HST project would be constructed and would travel through the peninsula along Couching Corridor and immediately adjacent to this project's site. At this time, construction staging options for HST are unknown. And basically, it goes on to say, in addition, the environmental documentation for the HST project would include an evaluation of potential adverse construction impacts, including those associated with staging sites. And basically, what I'm asking is that you look into the fact that this final document does not address the reality of HST construction. I looked for that, and it does not exist. It does not do it in related to the staging areas and the issues it will create. This final impact report blatantly refuses to address this within the parameters of the San Carlos Transit Village. There is also major conflicting issues at hand with land use. The railroad right-of-way through San Carlos has been left undeveloped, and not just here in San Carlos, but along other cities in the peninsula, for the very reason that sometime in the future, there will be construction of additional tracks constituting the need for open land that is utilized for staging areas. The city of San Carlos needs to take into account this fact and either alter, suspend, or not build this project development until HST completes its construction. If the city chooses to let this development proceed and construction of HST take place, there will be no alternative but for HST to stage all construction onto Old County Road and possibly onto the yards and homes fronting it. If this does become a reality, the city is going to open itself up to both individual and class action lawsuits from the community members, developers, and HST, among other affected parties. The very last thing I want to talk about is impacts to the San Carlos School District. And the reason why this is brought into the environmental impact report is, number one, I'm a teacher. I teach in the San Mateo Fosse City School District. I've personally seen, I've taught at almost every school there, I was a traveling teacher for quite a number of years. I have seen the nexus between apartment buildings being built and portable units having to be built onto the school sites. And that is something that we're facing here. Now, there's something that I'm just going to ask as Planning Commission, you look into closely. First of all, the quote from the final impact, the F-I-E-R, it says, "As stated as impact PS-3 on page blah, 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 the draft EIR, the San Carlos School District uses a student generation rate of .03 students per multifamily residential unit." .03. So I see you taking notes. Thank you. The Menlo Park City School District uses a multifamily student generation of .12. And the Palo Alto Unified School District uses a family generation rate of .15. The proposed project would result in approximately 34 to 42 new students within the San Carlos School District. This is from the final EIR. However, according to their response to me, however, according to San Carlos School District, elementary schools in San Carlos are currently over-enrolled by approximately 180 students. And the San Carlos School District middle schools are at capacity. And as you may have read in the papers or aware of, that they're actually looking to maybe add some school sites or portables on Central and wherever. So this is a big problem right now. Regardless of whether the school district is at or overcapacity and whether the proposed project would increase enrollment over the existing projections, payment of the school impact fees by the project sponsor, Legacy, is regarded as sufficient to mitigate impacts to less than significant. We're talking about a one-time payment of $900,000, broken up between Sequoia Union High School District and the San Carlos City School District. I went online and basically checked, and this is from the fiscal impact report analysis of a proposed development at 389 El Camino Real in Menlo Park dated May 2012. Interviews with Menlo Park City Elementary School District staff and review of its enrollment projection consultants in 2009 report indicate that each new residential unit will generate .39 of new city Menlo Park Elementary School students. Go back and look at that number that I gave you, that we came up with that. It's way off. Also, it came up that Sequoia Union High School District will indicate that each new residential unit will generate .2 new high school students. So what I said here in my response, in the draft EIR, I requested specific studies for the number of K-12 age children living in the following peninsula communities, the Crossings and Mountain View, Franklin Street Apartments in Redwood City, the City Center Plaza in Redwood City, the Hacienda, and to gain a more accurate picture of the impact of the proposed development in regard to school population. This was completely ignored. They did not respond to this whatsoever in the final EIR. The student generation rates from the final impact analysis for our final, the financial impact analysis for the proposed development at 389 El Camino Real in Menlo Park are much higher than what was stated in the San Carlos Transit Village final impact EIR. This is a difference from 34 to 98 students for San Carlos School District and 25 to 50 students for the Union High School District in Sequoia. And the last thought I want to leave you with is the reason why I'm bringing this into the environmental impact is this is going to cause the school district to have to build more portables. And this is not a cumulative impact. This is the impact, at least from the numbers that I got from the Menlo Park School District. So I'm just asking, as a Planning Commission, that you look carefully at this. You may have seen that I brought my two twins in here. I'm very concerned about what the educational system's going to be in this community with these types of developments going on. So thank you very much for your time. And there is, I put some financial impact things as well. I'm not going to talk about that tonight because that doesn't belong here, but that is in my statement, and I'd appreciate it if you guys could look that over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Time frame?
I'm going to try to keep it as short as I possibly can. I'm not planning to address the 60 pages of feedback that I provided to the EAR here. I want to talk a little more generally. But before I go there, we heard from the speakers on behalf of the Transit Village. And Mr. Fitzpatrick was showing a number of slides going back to the 80s and 90s, and I like to say that that was then and this is now. You know, back then, whether you folks realized or not, the former mayor of San Carlos was indicted, served prison time for corruption. So, you know, we can talk about a timeline, but let's talk about now, where we are now, what this project actually means to us. And then let's also talk about the common sense of the cumulative impacts, because if the transit agency forces rail construction to close Old County Road, then it's a Planning Commission is responsible to consider those, what are considered irrelevant impacts in the EIR. These are just a few comments from the presentations that were given. The purpose of CEQA is to avoid, minimize, and mitigate adverse impacts. It's not to ignore and deny them. Lots of rationalization was used in the EIR to throw out the intent of CEQA and to dismiss all of the impacts of this project. There is no discussion of staging area for future planned railroad projects, and as you could see, that there really is not very much room behind those buildings for future rail projects. Mr. Fitzpatrick overstated community involvement, to say the least. Legacy canceled at the last minute in one of our community meetings somewhere in the 2008-2009 timeframe. In a 2010 meeting, which they're saying was community outreach, the Legacy representative refused to engage in a dialogue with us in our community meeting and only took notes as we were planning strategy regarding the project. So that's not community outreach, and to make that claim is disingenuous. Technically, yeah, I mentioned that there's room for four tracks, but let's think about staging area for both couching electrification and high-speed rail projects. It was mentioned that shuttle stops were going to be on the west side. I was on the east side connectivity project. The shuttle stops were remaining on the east side. So I don't know where they got that claim unless that got changed. That's another issue to look at. It's not the stories, it's the height. When they say, oh, it's only three stories, it makes you think that that building is much lower than a four- or five-story building. The three-story buildings that are south of Holly Street are really 50 feet high, same as some of the higher. Just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. What plan was presented here? Was it option one, option two, or option three when they were showing it? That wasn't clear to me. Other things were, you know, were talked about already, but what I'd like to, you know, what I like to say is it certainly, you know, it felt terms like speculative public feedback, that just felt so loaded. The HSR delay that the city was talking about, saying, hey, we have to take that into consideration, well, that was initiated by the GESE membership informing the city that this was an issue that they had to face. It wasn't something that city staff on their own proactively looked at. It was due to community involvement. Okay? And that's not speculative, and that delay was caused by that. All right. So this project is a great example of why public transportation agencies should not get involved in the real estate and community planning business. There's been no dialogue or concept of cooperation between SAMTRANs and Legacy Partners and the community most impacted and affected by the false and deceptively named Transit Village development. The fabrications and falsehoods that pose as conclusions in the final EIR document are breathtaking in their disregard of valid and well-reasoned community concerns. I'd like to ask, why is a public transit agency's railroad right-of-way property that's designated for rail expansion being given away to a private developer for a giant apartment complex? Why is this public right-of-way property being given away when that same property will be needed for construction and staging of the high-speed rail and couching electrification projects? Why is this public land being given away to a private developer so that road closures and eminent domain of our properties can occur in our community? Why is this land being given away to build this giant complex whose size has never before seen in this community? What are the financials behind this giveaway? What are the provisions ensuring that that railroad right-of-way remains a railroad right-of-way in the future? What guarantees does the city have that that right-of-way is going to be used for its intended purpose when the time comes? Why would a private, you have to ask yourselves, why would a private developer agree that the buildings just built be torn down when this occurs? They won't. San Carlos and east side residents will be impacted by the closure of Old County Road and potentially the eminent domain of properties in our community. That's going to destroy the foundation and fabric of our lives so that SAMTRANs and Legacy can make their money. Instead of actually addressing the community's issues and concerns, in the EIR, SAMTRANs and Legacy spent their money on hiring a cadre of lawyers bent on wordsmithing subjective rationalizations as to why our views are insignificant, why further sound studies aren't necessary, and why the loss of our quality of life is irrelevant. SAMTRANs and Legacy Partners have proved in this document that our issues and concerns are meaningless, that soundproofing apartments from train noise, that's far more important than addressing slapback noise from the trains to our homes. It ignores the sound buildup to specific frequencies by the additional reflective surfaces in the buildings. It says, well, you only get sound reflected if it's a solid wall, and it has to be twice the size of the generating thing. I mean, it's pure pop cock. I'm a sound engineer. I've worked in digital audio my entire life. When you have multiple reflective surfaces, you get buildup of certain frequencies, and that makes sounds louder. That's what acoustical engineering is all about, and people spend thousands upon hundreds of thousands of dollars correcting those problems. To ignore the fact that those problems exist is a sham. The views of the west side hills are more important than the loss of east side resident, wait, 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 let me, it ignores the sound buildup, right, and addictive additional reflective surfaces, that the views of the west side hills are more important than the loss of east side resident views, that their right to make a profit comes before the loss of east side resident sunlight and removal of solar-powered rights to our homes. How does the ER come to the subjective conclusion that our views of the west side hills are insignificant? Is it because the view of our hills isn't, doesn't have the impact and grandeur of Yosemite? I mean, you know, how do you make that judgment? Rest assured that the marketing brochures for this development will tout the great views of the west side hills is an allure for people contemplating living between the busiest street on the peninsula and the sound of hundreds of trains whizzing by every day. How does a transit agency rationalize moving parking away from the train platform for the current commuters so that even fewer current residents can take the train? Why does the document rationalize away the legitimate concerns that more commuters will park on our streets because the development will make it so? I'll tell you why. It's because their right to make a profit trumps everything else. The EIR is a city of San Carlos's document. When one peruses through this document, one wonders who is being represented, surely not the citizens of San Carlos and especially those living on the east side. Every issue we've brought up has been rationalized away by compartmentaling the specific issue and ignoring cumulative impacts. I'm going to ask that you take some deep dives into the sound. In one instance, the lawyer legalese talks about, well, the sound buildup really isn't going to happen when the train is there because the train's going to block the noise, and it's really not going to impact people close. But the sound is going to bounce, and it's going to be louder further away. That's one argument they used in that specific instance. Then they took the instance of, well, you know, when it's further away, the sound gets dissipated, so that's not going to matter to the residents who are further away. So they use one rationalization to deal with one specific use case, and then used the opposite rationalization to deal with the other one. And it's perfect, fabulous legalese. So, you know, I can give a lot more examples why this document needs to be thrown out, but we don't have that time. What I can say that this my-way-or-the-highway approach has to stop, and the only way I can see this occurring is by starting all over with community involvement from the onset and dialogue from the get-go with a new developer. What I'd like to say is, it's up to this Planning Commission to do its due diligence and see through the fabricated conclusions of this document and to protect us, the future fate of our communities in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Fuller, followed by Dave Fish, followed by Suzanne Ruiz Dunlap.
I'd also like to welcome the three new Planning Commissioners that I see in front of us. I know there's been a lot of shuffling going on, and one of the Planning Commissioners is now on the City Council, and now we have the three of you. And I'm really excited to hear how you guys come in on this issue. And I'm also glad that we have everybody in the room. I see, you know, the folks that we haven't spoken with, I want to confirm that. We have not spoken with SAMTRANs or Legacy since the very beginning, when I became president of Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association, which was in 2008. So it may have been early 2009. And that's kind of what's happened here, is that we're so animated on both sides that we're not really talking anymore. And there's just so many problems about the project that we're so far apart that it's making it hard to really even have much of a conversation and make this thing work. And I'm just going to point out a couple of the key issues, because, I mean, we've heard about them all today. When I started, I got involved with this neighborhood association, and, you know, Scott, you were involved at that time, and you moved on to the Planning Commission. At that point, this building was going to be 48 feet tall, and I'd just like to say 58 feet, because it's 10 feet plus 48. So it was a 58-foot building at that point. feet, because it's 10 feet plus 48, so it's a 58, it was a 58-foot building at that point. And now it's a 65-foot building, 55 plus 10. So in spite of all the opposition that we've put forward, the building actually grew seven feet. When we started, there was no vantage point of the east side. It was just, all we saw was a wall on the east side. And I will say that a lot has changed, and I think that there have been some points addressed by this group. I don't want to say that nothing has happened, because I think a lot of the complaints has been from these guys, is that, hey, they're not even noticing what we are doing. We do notice some things that have happened. The problem is that there's so many more outstanding issues. This whole issue of eminent domain of our homes, and the shutting down of Old County Road, which had eventually forced us to blast through our cul-de-sac, which protects our neighborhood onto industrial, and just this possibility that a strong agency like High Speed Rail or High Speed Train, they don't care about our local regional issues. They're going to do whatever they have to do to get that train through, and this land was originally designated as railroad right-of-way, and now it's being built on. And so who's going to bear the impact? That issue of staging area in Old County Road is really, it's top of mind. As far as whether we can mitigate away these things, we are very, very upset that instead of having dealt with us over the last three to four years, that they chose to hire lawyers and shroud this thing in legalese. And we're also kind of concerned that many of the people here in the audience today who don't have red shirts on, they're all making money. They're all getting cash some way or another from this project. We're the ones who are actually losing money from the potential of having a 65-foot, eight-building wall, so eight 1,001 El Camino equivalents across the street from our 12-foot homes. That's a 53-foot height differential. That's two telephone poles versus a 12-foot home. So I just want to give you a sense of that. Now, is there some middle ground? I had always said, as president of the Neighborhood Association, early on, and I don't know if the board members agree, but if this thing were to be three stories and 40 feet, we might be able to live with it. But even that couldn't be done. And so we just have this essentially sham of a document. I'm going to end with one key point. Do you guys think, as a planning commission, just yes or no, that this document would have shown that there were no significant adverse impacts if the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association had paid those consultants and lawyers to do that document? I'll leave with that.
Thank you. Dave Fish?
Hi, I'm Dave Fish. I live on Sylvan Drive also. Appreciate you staying here tonight and listening to us. I haven't really prepared anything, haven't done my research, so I'm just going to be brief here. I was just wondering, let's see, construction, let's start there. What are we talking about? Three years? 36 months? Oh, that's right. Construction always runs a good 25% longer. So I'm going to have to deal with this for four years, maybe, if they're building this? Not too pleased with that. There's lots of other things I'd like to address, but again, I haven't done my research. I'm no dummy. I've been to graduate school, I've got degrees all over the place, I've been a member of Mensa, but what I go with is my gut. My gut says this is a bunch of, well, it's not a good project. I don't see anything good about whatsoever how it's going to benefit our neighbor, our neighborhood. I think, I recall reading, there was a project dubbed something similar to a transit village or whatever they called it, maybe in Melo Park, and they ended up with some paltry amount, because like 6% ridership of people that live there. People aren't going to move in here and take the transit. We're fooling ourselves. And I don't know who's really going to want to live there. It reminds me of sightseeing in Chicago, the loop. Oh, wow, look how close we are to those buildings on the trains. We can almost lean out and touch them. Isn't that the places where the bad guys live in the movies, where they rattle and vibrate, and no one wants to live there? And we're going to build that stuff here? Well, land of good living, now we'll have an amusement park, I guess. That's all the rambling you need to hear from me from now till I do some more research on it. But the whole thing's just, doesn't leave good taste in my mouth for all the reasons that have been mentioned. Thanks.
Thank you. Suzanne? Suzanne Ruiz Dunlap. Maybe she left. Jason Mansfield, followed by Jeff Grace and David Crabbe.
Hi, I'm Jason Mansfield, 21 Pine, San Carlos. And I like what you said at the first, Scott, was respect for everybody. And I think Greater East San Carlos has brought some good technical points across in the past, and they've been addressed, and that sort of thing. But I'll wear three hats today. So my first hat was transportation commissioner for San Carlos for about eight years while the traffic study was being prepared. So I wanted to give a little bit of history on that, if I could. I think my only comment at the time was, it would be nice to have a pedestrian overcrossing over Holly, something like that. But again, respect for my fellow commissioners, didn't seem like it was a priority. Otherwise, we didn't really seem to have too much of an issue for the traffic report, as I recall. Then, speaking of, like, community involvement, there was the Railroad Land Use Advisory Committee, right? Citizen Advisory Committee. So I'm not sure why we're really even questioning the project at all. You know, it's just a matter of making sure it's the best project possible. We also included in the General Plan Advisory Committee, Scott and I were both on that committee, and we approved this type of development there. Obviously, you know, there's specifics to work out, but there was a lot of community involvement that made this project get to where it is today. The next hat I want to wear is my civil engineer's hat. I'm a civil engineer, but I'm not working on this project. I've worked with the consultants that are working on this project, and they're top-notch consultants, really. They have a great team on this project. So I would respect their expertise. They've signed these projects or these documents, you know, and they do a great job. They're really good consultants. They're not the B-teams, they're not the cheapest consultants, they're probably some of the best in the area. So I'd respect that. Finally, as a 15-year resident of San Carlos, I'm excited to see this quality project. I think it's a really good project. We're going to get a lot of our state-mandated housing allotment here near transit, so that's great. It's not going to spill out very far into single-family or anything like that. And it's, again, a lot better than what's there right now, isn't it? I mean, it's desolate, it's ugly. And even before it was desolate and ugly, it was ugly. It was a lot of not very high-quality buildings there and businesses. And so I really look forward to this project. So I hope that you don't make it as, a development is hard enough to make happen, and so I hope you don't make it any harder than it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Jeff Grace, followed by David Crabbe, followed by, I'll wait.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Grace, resident of San Carlos for the last 33 years. I've been pretty active in this community for the last 22 years. I was precinct captain for the library bond measure, precinct captain for school bond measure, I've been very active in the youth athletic programs, former commissioner of the AY program, and vice president of the CY soccer club as well. When I moved here in San Carlos 33 years ago, downtown Laurel Street basically closed at 5:00, and there was nobody downtown, no restaurants to speak of, and streets were barren, and there was no activity. Today, we have a very vibrant downtown, very exciting, economically healthy downtown, with, you know, great restaurants. And a lot of this is due to good planning by the planning commission and our city council to invite economic development in this community. And we have brought in developers into San Carlos and have built, and built businesses and restaurants, and we've encouraged businesses to come in here. And that's the result, is a vibrant downtown. We need to keep encouraging developers to come into San Carlos, both residential and commercial. The proposed transit village will help keeping that forward momentum going in San Carlos. But it has to be economically feasible. It has to be feasible for San Carlos, but it also has to be feasible for the developer. With the issues we face, due to the demise of the redevelopment authority, I think it's even more important than ever to be encouraging developers to come into our community and build residential and commercial buildings. I'm concerned about Royal Plaza, what's going to happen with that, what's going on with redevelopment now. So again, I think it's as important as ever to encourage developers to come in and do things in San Carlos. I was here during the grade separation, and before the grade separation, there were some stores and some businesses on Long El Camino. Not great businesses, but there was business there. Since then, there's been no development since the grade separation was completed. It is now a blight, and others have said it as well. We have empty land and an unoccupied building over there. In reading the EIR, I didn't see any major obstacles to the transit village project. Most of the items in the 33-page report were LTS, less-than-significant issues that could be resolved. So in conclusion, it's time to move forward and bring new development to the City of San Carlos and keep San Carlos growing and vital. Thank you.
Thank you. David, followed by Fang Rui Li and Brian Jackson.
Honorable Chair and members of the planning commission, my name's David Crabbe. I was mentioned in the review there, maybe single-handedly got the EIR to at least come up with an alternative massing concept. So I'm gratified that my alternative conceptual study for the transit village was taken seriously and has prompted the EIR consultants to include two alternative massing concepts to reduce the visual and possibly acoustic and shadow impacts of the project on the east side residents. But I'm saddened that the two alternatives reduced the number of housing units below the 280. I'd like to keep the 280 as much as possible. I understand why the city has elected to separate out the review of the EIR from the final design, project design. As I understand, the intent is that if the EIR is certified by the city council as written, the project can have up to 280 units, but the final design can take many forms, including some version of the reduced massing alternative. So long as the impacts of the project do not exceed what was evaluated by the EIR, this gives us some flexibility. I support the city's approach of asking for approval of the EIR of up to 280 units at this time, but I feel that such approval must include a strong statement by the planning commission that in Phase Two of the approval process, Legacy needs to be more flexible in their design approach and to revisit the original design plans with the intent of revising the plans to more closely meet the intent of the revised massing alternative, while simultaneously trying to maintain as many of the 280 units as possible. My original concept actually showed 280 units. And I'd like them to make sure that they would work out the final architecture of the redesign in consultation with both the planning staff and the east side residents, who in good faith would be urged to not be unreasonable in their demands. So some more coordination between what Legacy is doing, what the east side people are doing. We've heard over and over again that the east side people feel that they have been left out of the discussion. I think it's an opportunity now to sit down, maybe with a mediator, maybe not, and maybe work out some of the details and come up with something more interesting architecturally. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Did I get it right, or did I butcher it?
Same way, close enough.
Okay.
Hi, Chair and the commissioners. My name is Fenway, I live in 1012 Uvenice Drive. I moved to San Carlos for about two years. And I have to say, I regret that I made this decision and make the move. I heard that San Carlos is a city of living, but I don't see the part of city of living yet. We live in the east side of San Carlos. The sidewalks are not well-maintained, there is birds stamping everywhere, and there is post, electric power post in the middle of sidewalk. My wife is pregnant and is about to due next week, actually, is this Saturday, and I'm not excited about raising my baby here. If there's any chance I get to move, I'll move out of the city. It's not possible for me now, because I pretty much spent all my living, all my saving buying this home, I just have to make it as nice as possible. But with this project, I don't really see the hope of that. I come in from Taiwan, you're some my code, a third-party award. So we've been, we're seeing this a lot, developers who want to make monies, they find lands and just try everything they can to develop. And what I see from this project is, we are already dividing San Carlos, so, okay, there's another lie that my realtor told me, they said that there is no difference between east side and west side of San Carlos, and that's a lie, because there is difference, a great difference. What I'm seeing from this project is returning east side of San Carlos into East Palo Alto. And what we are seeing from this is crime rate is going to raise, and property price is going down. And there's going to be, let me jump to this question first for Legacy. So I'm curious how much they plan to rent all these properties, or are they just going to sell this to, hire some very good salesman, sell it to some stupid property manager who managed the property and could not rent those out? Because if I get to choose, I would never choose to live in a property that's next to a train rail, no matter how good they advertise the sound cancellation is. So I wouldn't rent it even if it's below $500. So who end up renting all those properties? Definitely not something with decent job or good retirement plan. So what we're seeing is, it's going to become, East Palo Alto is going to become an area that nobody want to go, nobody want to come, and we are moving away from the area. And this doesn't mean West San Carlos is, has nothing to do with this, because that also means we have this side, it's decaying, and this is going to reflect to the west side of San Carlos, too. The property price drop, and the school district become lower graded, and that's going to affect, also reduce the property price of west side of San Carlos. Okay. So here are just some random notes. First, I see they claim that there's going to be landscaping and no blocking of view, but what I see from the render, the only view we have in the east side of San Carlos is the beautiful hill, and we are not going to see any of those. Because consider, they look fine on the ground, because if you look from top down, there, yes, there is a channel. However, our house is not right on the, right below the channel. We have, we live on the side of the road. So from the side of the road, we are actually not seeing anything from the channel. And the only way to see the view is to sit in the middle of the road, and maybe if this happens, we can start to organize some evening party in the middle of the road and just have our own chairs bring into the middle of the road and have a tea. And I would do that, but I don't think that's what everyone want to see. Another thing is the roof design. It's hardly co-architecture, because that's probably the cheapest possible way to build roof. Anyone who can, we can hire a guy from outside of Home Depot and build it. If I can build it, I have never built a home, but that looks simple. And the tree, landscaping on the tree, also the same comment, that's hardly co-landscaping, it's just, it's pretty much just planting some average high tree, nothing compared to when I, what's considered landscaping, think Berlin game, next to El Camino, those tall trees, they really add values to the city, but not those cheap trees that we can just purchase from Home Depot and plant ourselves. Okay, another thing, question for the planning department. So when we build a home, we have to get this approval from the planning department, and to get approval, so we, there's so many rules we have to follow, like we do not blocking sides for our neighbors, we do not blocking views, we do not create shadows for our neighbors. But what I don't understand is why these outside developers, they get to build buildings that block the side, block the view, and create shadow on the neighborhood. Not even, I mean, even just... I mean, even just some period of the year, even just some properties, but that's not And if we, why we cannot do it, but outside developer who doesn't even live here can do it. So, I don't want to just bring in all these negative points. I do have some proposals. So, first, assuming, I see this, I still see this, is trying to turn in the East Side of San Carlos becoming East Palo Alto. No offense to East Palo Alto, but that's just a fact. I recommend considering relocate all the East Side San Carlos household to the West Side, because by then, it's probably the only side that's considered city of living. Or compensate the relocation fee to all the household, maybe 200, 300 households. All right, but back to the more practical side, I think, if the real problem is creating more livings, how about we improve the overall property, overall quality of East Side, both East Side and West Side of San Carlos by building more parks, make more landscaping, make the sidewalk better, and so we can have, for example, art fairs, like Menlo Park. We can have better park like San Mateo Central Park, or even San Francisco City, they have this beautiful new playground in a city park. So, it's, and of course, this is probably kind of far-fetched, and also consider underground trail, train rails, so we can build a beautiful park on top of that narrow land. So, it also, so the point is, we add qualities to the scene, to create a scenery. So, there's going to be more people willing to expand their house, more people willing to build, instead of this huge construction that you build this ugly block of properties, we build nice, we build nice bungalows, we build nice single-family house, but bigger, or multifamily house that can feed more families.
I'm going to ask you to finish up your comments.
So, that's my point.
Thank you. Brian Jackson, Susie McKee, and Cameron Miller.
I'm Brian Jackson. I live on Hall Street. Basically, I just want to reiterate a few things that a few other people have addressed. The first one is the schools. When the draft EIR came out, the proposal was that it would have no impact on the schools, that there would be eight students in the 319 units. And I almost fell out of my chair. My wife is a teacher in the San Carlos School District. Every school, every school in the district has no less than 10 portables. Every school is overcapacity. My wife actually had a class with 36 students in it, at the end of the day, with four ADHD kids. It was really exciting. Heard a lot about that one. And then, the final EIR address basically dismissed the school impact completely. And the city of San Carlos has already removed a school, the L'Oriola School, and put in houses that brought in families for kids that overpopulated the rest of our schools. I think the school impact needs to be looked at in a little more detail. We're already, I mean, they're cutting, I don't know what's going to happen. They have state requirements with the number of students, and they're not even fitting those. The other one is the rail passage. I'd like to see a copy of the lease. I haven't looked at the final EIR to see if the full lease agreement with Legacy is in there, to see if it indeed does give back the rail right away that was, that the land was originally designated for. That's essentially, you know, this is what the land was designated for. Is it in the lease that this is what, it will still be used for when that time, if and when that time comes? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie.
I have a slightly unique perspective, because I live in a three-story little condo right on the edge, probably twice as far away from the tracks as the new development will be. And I'm luckily, I'm not in the end unit, but I've been in the end unit when a train has gone by. And they also, they have cracks in the, you know, in the walls, because it's not just the noise, it's the rattling. So, people who live up on the hills and pass judgment on what's going to happen on down here, I just wish they would understand, including whoever's doing these reports, if you had that next to your house, I mean, who is going to live in those places? I wouldn't live in the end unit because of the noise and the rattling. And it is a construction issue. And again, we're probably twice as far away as the person who's right next to the tracks is going to be. So, to me, this is totally ridiculous. I mean, whatever you want to call it, East Palo Alto, whatever. My hat is off to my people who've done such a fabulous job of the details of some of the technical aspects. I'm just telling you from somebody who lives really near the tracks. And when those freight trains go by at night, they're not short, they're long, and they're really loud. And I don't mind them terribly, but if I was on the end, I think I would. So, that's just something to really think about, not to mention the Caltrans issue and the high-speed rail, which just freaks me out. I know we've, that it's been talked about, that they won't go underground, but to me, that's the only thing that makes sense. The entire peninsula practically, except for San Carlos, is suing, you know, Palo Alto, in Menlo Park, Burlingame are all doing something to try to keep the trains from coming down that corridor. Yeah, and then, you know, all the things that have been foisted upon East San Carlos, the hospital, In-N-Out Burger, not taking care of the sidewalks, et cetera. But the main thing to me is just the reality of living that close to the train. And those people will be closer. And I have double-pane windows, I have good construction, it's new construction, and it's not a good idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Miller, followed by Debbie Baca. Debbie's got to be out there somewhere.
Well, thank you, folks, for your attention for this long evening. I just, I wanted to give you some really brief historical perspective on all of this. I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee that was commissioned, actually twice, by the city council, more than 10 years ago, more than 10 years ago. We were studying what should happen to the railway corridor property. And frankly, I assumed that the reports that we did all that time ago had simply gone in circular file, because in that amount of time, literally, nothing has been done. Studied, studied, more studied. And finally, an EIR has come out with a negative impact. The city and the powers that be, whether it's Caltrain or Samtrans, I can't remember which, has finally decided on a developer and finally decided to do something. Had an environmental impact report prepared by a well-reputed company who came out with the negative impact findings after years of studying. Folks, it's time to do something. That property over there has been vacant. I've been living here for 17 years, and that property has been vacant for virtually the entire time. I've had my business in town for 28 years, and there's never been anything over there. It's time to do something. If after, in excess of 10 years of study, it's been decided that the best use is residential with some commercial around the train station, that's fine. I'm not concerned about the economics of the project. It's going to be paid for by private people. If they lose money, that's their problem. If they can't get people to rent the end units, that's their problem. It's not the city's problem. It's time for the city to move forward. It's time for us to have something in that space that presents a good image, that presents the image of San Carlos as a place where you can actually get projects done. This is not San Francisco, I hope, where you can never get anything done. So, read the environmental impact report, come to your own conclusions. I'm not an expert, I can't help you with that, but I can tell you, enough is enough. It's time to move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Baki Galupi. Correct my pronunciation there, please.
It's Baca Galupi.
Okay, thank you.
So, I've been in this room many times, and we've heard from people here who are saying they're concerned that our city, our government, is not listening to their concerns. We were told the same thing in the meetings that we had, not only about more cellphone towers put on my backyard that is decreasing, will decrease the value of my home, and also we have safety concerns, but also, we were told the same thing, that there would be interactions between not only the business, but also the concerned citizens. And I've heard several times this evening that the citizens who are most affected by this plan are not being heard or listened to. And that is of great concern as a government who should be serving and protecting their people. I'll have to say that I am running for Congress in this district because of the city of San Carlos, because I've been in so many arguments with this city, because you refuse to listen to the people you are hurting. In this environmental impact report, it says in here that because of the increase on page S30, that there will be population growth according to this plan, and there will be employment growth. However, there is no significant impact. If that's the case, then why this plan that's going to impact people's personal property and their everyday life? The other thing that's in here are a lot of mights, shoulds, coulds, like maybes. Maybe this plan will have a significant impact. Actually, it says it will have a significant impact. In some cases, on like page between 715 and 717, and also around 720, it talks about uncovering human remains, that that's kind of, that's a huge significant impact. And my concern about that is that should then fall under the National Historic Preservation Act, which then would put this in a national issue, a federal issue, as well as the 3.5 supposed federal funding that this plan is getting in order to be pushed through. I think NEPA should be considered, and under NEPA, every person in this room is considered under that act. So, then you have a NEPA process as well as a CEQA process. Other things that I find in this EIR, EIS are significant impacts, including injury and death. What kind of report, what kind of impact, environmental impact report would a city consider as a project that has a significant impact of a possible injury and death to people? Let's see. I think that's about it. I think government should protect and serve its people. I think you sit up there hoping to do that. I don't think this plan does that. In fact, the other thing that this plan doesn't do, it doesn't talk about the global warming that we are told about every day, the 1.4 meter rise in the oceans that we hear about the One Bay Area Plan. It doesn't even talk about the One Bay Area Plan, nor does it talk about the Grand Boulevard Initiative. Do the people in this audience know about those plans, which are in concert with this plan? Have we even told them about that plan? That is not representative government. That is ideology and pushing an agenda through. And we, the people who pay you, deserve better than that. And that's why people like me are hoping to change how government works. But anyway, thank you, and thank you for considering the true impact on the people this project has.
Thank you. Glenn, another one, Glenn. Glenn's coming up and going to tell me his last name.
My last name is Gualeno.
I would have butchered that really bad.
I'm a resident of San Carlos, have been so for somewhere in the neighborhood 37, 38 Couple of things that were mentioned tonight that really strike me. I mean, first of all, I got to say, right up front, I'm against this project. 1,700 feet to park a car and walk, that's five and a half football fields. I don't know how many people are going to be doing that in the rain in the winter. I think a lot of that parking will end up on the city streets, on the other side, on the east side. These people are affected the most. I noticed in the renditions tonight that were shown on the screen, all the roofs are dark. They were red, they were dark gray. Seems to me we have a climate action plan that calls for light roofs. It's going to change the whole appearance of those buildings. I would suggest that you have the architect redo those, so that people get a better idea what this thing's going to look like. Grand Boulevard Initiative wasn't even mentioned. El Camino's going to lose a lane of traffic in each direction. It's going to have high-speed buses running down the middle of it. What effect is that going to have along with the traffic that this project's going to It was mentioned about the noise levels and their being attenuated. Well, by their own study, they said that the noise levels are going to be approximately 2 dB. We have a sound engineer here in the room, I'm sure will attest to you, that 3 dB is twice the noise level. It's a complete doubling, 100% increase, 3 dB. So, if you're just under that 3 dB standard, you've got a lot of significant noise. I don't live on the east side, and with this project going through, I'm glad I don't. But I do live up on the hills up here, and I know that sound travels, and there's nothing between me and those railroad tracks. I know that with sound reflects, and there's going to be more noise reflected up there. I'm also concerned about the fact that we're cutting back on fire departments in this city. We're cutting back on police services. Our schools are already overcrowded, and we're going to do nothing to solve those problems, but we're going to move forward with this project because we've got $3.5 million from federal government. This gentleman over here said that private interests are paying for it. Those are taxpayers that are paying for that. And we're going to pay as citizens in this community. It's going to change the complete flavor of this community. There's a lot of people that moved here for the quality of life, and that's going to be changed drastically. I only hope that you really consider what you're doing here. You all live in this community, you're going to have to live with the consequences, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karavank, followed by Tom Nudson, and I have no more speakers' forms after that, so if you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karavank, 423 Hillcrest Road, San Carlos. The project proponents appear to have lost sight of the fact that our train station is a real transportation hub for the city of San Carlos. Hundreds of people use it to commute to San Francisco and back. The proposal renders the train station a mere pimple in the sea of high-rise apartments and commercial buildings. When the railroad grade separation was designed, the city hired Architectural Resources Group, or ARG, as its consultant. ARG is a highly respected architectural firm involved in historic restoration. The boarding platforms were designed to begin and end at the station so that the station would remain an integral travel experience. The historic context was carefully preserved by keeping view corridors open, including landscaping placement. And the roundabout for dropping off and picking up passengers was expressly kept. This has been, this maintains a sense of arrival and departure as it has done from the day the station was built. Four stories is way too tall. What about the retail and commercial buildings on El Camino across the street, which are mostly single-story or low-rise suburban? The contrast is just too great. The proposed project doesn't blend in. As an example, you may want to check out the four-story apartment building on Walnut behind CVS. This is an example of another mistake. It's way too tall, it just doesn't blend in to the neighborhood. And I agree with the other speakers who indicated that this project should include affordable housing. Thank you for your attention.
Tom.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thomas Nudson, I am the EDAC liaison to the Planning Commission. I have no comments from EDAC tonight. We will be taking a look at this project... We will be taking a look at this project in short order, and I would like to take this opportunity to invite the project sponsors to talk with Alseve or Mark Sawicki to arrange that. And then we'll hopefully have some comments, perhaps after this process, the SEQA process, but certainly prior to final approval of the project. As an individual, I just want to say a few comments. Although it does not appear to be required by SEQA, I encourage the developers to provide as much outdoor play space for the children of any new multifamily units that will be provided. And at last, I want to say, in regards to the landscaping plan, based on my experience, landscaping always tends to come at the very end of a project, and frequently not to the scale shown on any architectural renderings provided to the city. In this instance, the landscaping is an integral component of the incorporation of the site into its surroundings. Because of the landscaping in this plan is a component of the mitigation of bulk and mass, potentially as well as noise, I encourage the commission to memorialize a minimum standard in quality of landscaping required as a condition for the eventual project approval, with firm commitments from both the developer and the landowner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harrison?
Chairman, I'd like to make one comment.
Thank you.
This is to the members of the committee. Just remember, when you go over the report, the multi-page report, that there's always two sides to everything. One day, the City of San Carlos and the City of Belmont decided to have a baseball game. And so, they met at the park, and they had their game. Belmont got two runs, San Carlos got one run. So Belmont goes back, and they tell their people, "We won the game." And San Carlos came in last. San Carlos went back and told their people, "We came in second, and Belmont was next to last." And that's the report that you will be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's it for public comment. Now, I'm gonna turn to my fellow commissioners, and ask if they have any additional comments to include the city staff.
Comments? No.
Questions?
I don't know where to begin, really. I mean, a lot of valid points are brought up. One thing is that we're digesting all these documents, pretty much, I don't know, 700, 800 pages, I don't even know how many pages it is at this point. But a lot of great points. I appreciate everybody taking the time out of their day as well to present their views, and a lot of things have just popped in my head with, you know, further questions for not only the developer, but for the city staff, and the committee as a whole, pretty much, so...
Yeah, I mean, my two questions relate to questions that were raised today, and they both kind of deal with timing and content. One is with respect to the concerns raised about the school district. I guess I wonder whether it's our role to consider the effect on the school district, and if so, when we would consider that, whether it's part of the ER process, or some later time, or not at all. And then the second related question is also a timing question, with respect to dividing the EIR from the rest of the process. I guess I just wonder, I think someone made a comment about the ability to, I think it was Mr. Crabbe, the architect, he said, "We need to be able to continue to consider the scope of the plan." And I'm wondering what limitations we have after approving the ER, if that's what ultimately happens, to make limitations and changes to the plan. And I guess I just, I wonder what our ability to do that is, after the EIR is approved, if that's what happens.
Mr. Chairman, I can try to field that particular question, as it's more of a procedural question, as opposed to a SEQA question.
Yes, why don't you?
As noted in the presentation early, this is just about the environmental significance of the project. When Phase Two occurs, it would be about the merits of the project, meaning the scale, the massing, the setbacks, the landscaping. The Planning Commission and the City Council have purview over those components of the project. For instance, there was a suggestion made about landscaping, and you can require a certain type of landscaping, you can require a certain amount, you can require a certain size of trees. So your purview is very broad in the second phase. And in the second phase, is where you would establish conditions on the project as well, because they're requesting permits from the city. The city has a discretion over what gets built and how it gets built, and what it looks like. So you could apply, at that phase, you can attach conditions to the development. We will allow you to do X under a certain condition. Again, trees is an example. But there's examples for architecture, traffic, just about every area that was covered in the EIR this evening. So, I hope I answered the question in saying that your purview at that stage is very broad.
I think I understand, but I guess my question was related to that. So, this is just, I'm not suggesting for a moment this would be something that I would be advocating for. This is just an example that came up. Someone said, "Well, maybe I would be okay if it were 40 feet, rather than 60 feet." And again, I'm not suggesting that that is workable, I just, that was an example. Obviously, a 40-foot building is very different than a 60-foot building. You're looking at environmental impacts of a 60-foot building. Now, presumably, the environmental impacts of a 40-foot building are less, maybe, presumably. But at some point, does the project become so different, that the environmental impact report is not sufficient to evaluate it anymore? And I'm just kind of wondering, is there any guidance as to where that line is? Like, how many changes you can make, and it still be a valid project, in light of the approved environmental impact report?
Well, the maximum, the environmental impact looks at the maximum impact, the worst case. So the envelope is very high, in terms of the scale and the mass and the height of the development. It's the maximum of everything that is evaluated. And so if you decided, as a commission, or you recommended that the development be less than the maximum scope that's considered in the EIR, that's okay. Because the EIR, again, is the maximum. Now, if you said, "No, we want to go eight stories," or six stories, that wouldn't work. Because then you'd be creating impacts that need to be analyzed, that have not been analyzed yet in the EIR. As long as you do something less than the maximum envelope, you have that flexibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Did you want a question to your first, or...
Well, I mean, if anyone knows the answer about the school districts, I did ask that. I am interested in that.
I am interested as well.
I just don't know what our role is. I mean, we didn't hear from the school districts today. I don't know whether we're ever gonna hear from the school districts.
We evaluated potential impacts on the schools in the environmental document, and again, as a disclosure document, we made estimates on what the potential maximum amount of new students would be. And we have to rely on legal challenges to SEQA, that there were rulings done that contributions of mitigation fees already set up by jurisdictions considered adequate mitigation for potential impacts to school districts. So that's really as far as SEQA can go. We can make estimates on what the potential number of new students would be, but the mitigation, if the city has a set fee for new residential units in the city, for example, to be paid to school districts, that's considered adequate mitigation under SEQA.
Well, I mean, I think, I guess, the short answer would be then yes, that is part of the SEQA process. We're supposed to determine whether or not the report adequately reflects the impacts on schools. Is that...
Correct, and that's disclosed in the document, as I...
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Corral?
I just, I appreciate everybody coming here and expressing their thoughts for and against this project. It's brought a lot of concerns and benefits to my mind as well. First, the, in the EIR, the study on the shadowing, I'd personally like to see a little more detail to that, since there's clearly some times during the year where we have sun well beyond 5:00 PM, and I'm sure that that would create much more extensive shadows that were illustrated in this report. The parking in the EIR, I'm wondering if more can be either added, or possibly moved, to possibly minimize the distance from the depot to where people are going to be parking. I know parking seems to be a huge concern to the east-side residents, and it actually should be to the west-side residents as well, since it's just across the street. So, that's something that I'd like to see a little bit more detail on, that will help me decide.
So I have just a couple of questions, that, funny enough, one of the residents also brought up, but I'm curious, which capacity, what unit number are we actually evaluating in the EIR? Is it 260? Is it a higher number, a lower number? It wasn't entirely clear to me, so I'm wondering if you could answer that.
Certainly. The maximum number that is being proposed is 280 units. Is it 281?
I think it's 281.
281, 281. So that's the maximum. That's the alternative that is being proposed by the developer. So that's the maximum number that's been evaluated. There's also some alternatives in there that look at lower densities. And the reason for that is to get the lower heights, you have to reduce some of the floors and eliminate some of the floors of the development, and that eliminates units. So there, you'll see some other numbers associated with the other two alternatives, at 240 and 260, I believe. So the maximum is really the key number. The other alternatives suggest alternative developments that may have less impact.
Okay. So if we approve the environmental impact report, we would then be able to discuss the alternatives at a later phase?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's see. Sorry. The Grand Boulevard was also brought up in the public comment section. I am wondering what impact that project would have on this project.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's a number of different people that can answer that question in the room, but the Grand Boulevard Initiative is an initiative, and it's meant to improve the appearance of El Camino Real, and the cities in our county have agreed to work with our local CCAG, the City and County Associations of Governments, to forward the guidelines and principles of the Grand Boulevard Initiative, which include better design for El Camino, and some housing along El Camino Real, and just kind of making it a more Grand Boulevard. But it's not something that would be associated, it's not been adopted as a regulation or a development standard for the City of San Carlos, and it's not used as a threshold of significance for purposes of this EIR. It's just something to aspire to, in terms of the guidelines on a broader level.
Thank you. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
And this does not preclude us from asking lots of questions at the next meeting, which is the public hearing in October, on October 1st. For me, I would like to see the commissioners get a copy of the EIR for the raising of the tracks. It seems that there is a question about whether the berm was constructed in such a way as to preserve significant views from the east side. And so, I would be curious to see if, in the EIR for the berm, it was mentioned as an important factor there or not. Boy, there's a lot of questions that I had about, really, how the Planning Commission and the Residential Design Review Committee has treated individuals, and how, versus, say, a project of this size, and whether the same rules apply for an individual house that's being built, versus a project of this size. And so, I'd like to kind of explore that a little bit further, through some of our, the items in the general plan, and land use. Shadows, for example, how do we treat an individual shadow from an individual house, or blocking of a view from an individual, versus something that's, a project that may block that for an entire group of people? Oh, I'd also like to talk about what was mentioned, the eight-to-10-foot difference between El Camino and Old County, and how, when we look at a project, where do we set the grade at? Is it the highest point? Is it the lowest point? I think that's something that we should discuss. Schools, again. Another thing that I wrote down about parking was, sort of, how far are people willing to walk when free parking is closer? You know, if they're gonna have to pay to park in a Caltrain lot, and free parking is at within 500 feet, and they've got to go 1,700 feet in order to pay for parking, my question is, where do we realistically think that people are going to park? So, I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I had a concern about the traffic demand management. What happens in five years? I mean, we have an agreement in there that they will pay, and that that traffic demand management will go on for three years. But what happens in five years, where they decide they don't want to do some of the things that are, you know, are designed to make this a transit-oriented development? I, you know, I have a concern about landscaping. If, to me, if there really was a desire to do this, they've known for 15 years that they could put landscaping up, and really, if they had put landscaping up 15 years ago, views wouldn't even be a significant issue right now, because they would all be covered with landscaping. So, I want to make sure that we really look deeply at landscaping, because I think that's a solution that could solve some of the problems. And I'm not sure that I was overly impressed with the amount of landscaping that I saw. And in one place, I happened to look at it and see, there's a huge section that has no landscaping, or large landscaping at all. And so, I want to make sure that, when we look at the project, that's... at the project, that's an issue. Noise, I talked to Al earlier today about the idea of making sure that we had the noise consultant that worked on the ER actually here to answer questions and to give us the details in a language that we can all understand. I think there's a lot more things. I think that is going to be an interesting October. I think it's 10:30, and I think we'll end this part of the meeting there, and I need a vote from the commissioners in order to extend the meeting for another 10 minutes to sort of finish the commission business.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to reports, correspondence, and general information.
No city council actions to report?
No city council actions to report. Oh. Planning Commission comments or reports. I asked you a question last time.
And I conferred with Mr. Rubens, and he may want to chime in, that the Planning Commission, your broad latitude on your reports to the Planning Commission. However, they're primarily intended to be those of a nature that are related to planning and meetings that you may have attended where planning matters are discussed, or conferences you may have gone to, but there is broad latitude.
That doesn't really answer my question, but...
Maybe I can say it in...
Mr. Rubens is saying he doesn't want to hear how your kids are doing.
I think, well, that's a good point, Commissioner Silver. No, I think the, saying it a different way, historically, that's what that's been for is planning issues, projects you may have seen in other communities, conferences, something you learned about that's pertinent to planning. Really, other issues are not really within your jurisdiction, so I can't stop you from talking about the barbecue or the event that's coming up, but primarily, it's for planning issues.
I will respect that, but I wanted to ask the question, because I've seen the city council does something very similar. Correspondence?
None.
Planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
There will not be a meeting on the 6th, but we will have a regularly scheduled meeting on August 20th.
And I have a comment. I'd like to introduce our new senior associate at my law firm, Kamis Steinmetz. She's gonna be helping the Planning Commission from time to time, and especially for this project.
Welcome. Anything else from the commission?
I'm sorry, so there's no meeting, we're not meeting on August 6th. The next time we're meeting is August 20th, is that right?
Just to be clear, Deborah, RDRC is meeting on the 6th?
I'll have to get back to you.
You'll have to get back to me. That's what I thought. It's okay.
I don't think so, but I'll get back to you.
Can I go back to commissioner comments? My mail is still not working. I don't know whether I've gotten any mail, but it's still not getting forwarded to me. So if someone could follow up with that, I would love to get mail.
Mine is also not getting forwarded. I do get text messages on my phone, though, so I do know if they're coming. I just, at the last meeting I was at, he had mentioned he was gonna set it up so that it went to my personal inbox, and that hasn't happened.
I just go in and forward it to myself from my city account, so...
And you set that up, or you just do it manually every time?
You just do it manually. Every single time, I check the email once, just once a day, and it works for you.
It can be done.
Okay.
I would love it, I would love it could be done again, if possible. Thanks.
Did it work before, and now it stopped?
Frankly, I don't want to bore folk. I've never accessed the San Carlos email. I was hoping just to have it forwarded so that I wouldn't have to remember another password. That would be my preference, but if it can't be done, I will be more diligent at checking the San Carlos email.
Okay. Saying nothing else, meeting adjourned.
For once, I have no email issues.
It can be done.
It can be done.